Good afternoon, the May 9th, 2023 Board Session is now in order. Paul, roll call please.
Mr. Susan.
Here.
Ms. Wright.
Here.
Ms. Jenkins.
Here.
Mr. Trent.
Here.
Ms. Campbell.
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The first topic is to hold a public hearing for Board Policy 3500, Remote Work. Is there anyone present who wishes to address this item? Is there anyone here who wishes to address this item? Hearing none? Is there any board discussion on this item? Come on, guys, we're moving to mobile work. This is pretty cool. I mean, we can say some nice things. This is fun, right? Just so you guys know and everybody out there that might be watching, this is in response to our departments requesting and many interviews where we lost potential candidates based upon them being able to remotely work, especially in our IT government area. So I think this gives us an opportunity to move forward in that direction. Anybody else have anything to say?
No.
This is a big, this is a big deal.
Yeah, no, it's good stuff.
All right, so no questions, so it'll just roll tonight. We don't need motions or anything like that. The next topic is parent survey. Mr. Brune, you have some good stuff for us here?
Good afternoon, Board. And Ms. Han, good afternoon to you.
I got you, I got you. Turned it on.
Turned it on right away.
Turned it on for you.
Well, we're off to an awesome start. Let me get my PowerPoint up.
Want to share this one here? Come on.
So, parent survey, a quick little, you know, history, especially with some new board members going through this for the first time. This is an annual survey that was sent to all of our BPS families, asking for their feedback on the school district and their experience at their schools. It's used by individual schools and also by the district. Many of the questions focus on communication preferences, overall view of BPS, and how to better help families engage with the school district and their schools. This is the second year that GCR has been in charge of the survey. Caitlin Maffeo executed it and kind of led this effort, so I'm very thankful to her from my, from my team. And also the schools, each school had a survey champion that she worked with to try to get families involved in this. Prior to, two years ago, when GCR took this over, it was, we just helped market it, and it was actually run by another division who executed that survey. So last year, GCR presented in front of the Board, and we'll use some of those results to compare and contrast to what we have this year. So like in years past, this survey was sent via email. We also had paper copies available to families that preferred that or needed that. We, you know, wanted people to use digital, easier to take, easier to complete, easier to compile. The survey opened February 27th and it closed April 3rd. We did leave it open longer than scheduled as we tried to get more people to take the survey. Respondents for this time around, 17,366. Overall, there were 26 questions. We will not go over all those 26 questions, but it's going to give you some of the highlights. The survey is already being used, which is normal. Each school has their individual results, and that will be used for part of their school improvement plans. That is usually done over the summer, and I believe the Board will approve those in the fall. Can also be used for staff training and also to, you know, change course on some things that the schools deem it necessary. Title I grant writers also are given results that helps them as they plan for the next year with our Title I schools. The survey results will be shared on our web, will be shared on our website and on social media. Did you hear that?
Yep.
Okay, just making sure I'm not just losing, I hear voices, but I just don't know if they're in here or what's going on. We'll continue. The history of respondents, so this year, like I said, we had 17,000 plus that took it. Last year, that's compared to 25,000, 22,000 the year before. And then, then the, you know, the previous three years, we were in the mid, you know, teens when it comes to respondents. So this is, this is one of the, one of the questions, and so I like to start here because it's kind of overall, you know, bare bones, how do you feel at your child's school? Do you feel welcome? And so this is a good, quick answer. So, you know, when you compare this year to last year, elementary, middle and high, you can see that on your screen. 93% felt welcome at their child's school in elementary. That, that saw an increase. We also saw a slight increase for middle school, and again, a slight increase for, for high school. So that's good. They feel welcome. So one of the most important things that we discussed is, how do you treat your families and how do they feel when they come into your, to your school? Another question that I thought was interesting was, please rate your overall satisfaction with BPS. Again, this year, very satisfied. This is for elementary. We broke it down. Very satisfied, ticked up. Satisfied, ticked down. Neither satisfied or dissatisfied was about the same. We saw a 2% increase for dissatisfied and a little bit of decrease for very dissatisfied. You'll see more when it comes to the middle school, a little tick up in very satisfied, five points down when it comes to satisfied. And you can see the neither was about the same. Dissatisfied went up about three points and very dissatisfied was about the same. Now, a quick note, we did round these to the closest percentage, so if it's 20%, that may be 20.2%, 20.3%. For high school, very satisfied, stayed the same. Satisfied dropped by 5%. Neither satisfied grew by, or, or dissatisfied grew by 4%. And you see dissatisfied and very dissatisfied either staying the same or growing by two points. So the next thing we wanted to know is, how could our school kind of work with our families and assist them in playing an active role when it comes to decision-making at the school? So, you know, some of the things that they, our families kind of responded to are highlighted on this, this screen. These aren't the only options that we gave them. This is just the ones that got the most, most attention from our families. So you see that, you know, more information about the school issues to be addressed climbed. How to get, how to become more engaged went down when it comes to elementary by 10 points. Meeting times, convenient meeting times, there's always a challenge that we face with everybody's busy schedule. That stayed about the same, went up a little bit. And opportunities to share their opinion on school issues went up by 6%. That's something worth noting, especially for the elementary schools, I think. Middle school, you see again, a climb when it comes to issues and how they're being addressed. Saw a pretty deep decline when it comes on to how to be, come engaged. Convenient meeting times is still there, and you saw a 5% growth when it comes to wanting to share their opinion on school issues. As you go to high school, you can see the numbers again, grew on that first, that first item. Again, we declined when it came to how to become more engaged by 12 points there. Convenient meeting times is still in the 40s and a growth when it comes to sharing their opinion on school issues. So then we asked, which informational meetings and activities would you be interested in attending? And we broke this down, as you can imagine, into the different school zones. Elementary, you know, family fun nights was there, but you see volunteer opportunities, it's pretty high, as it was last year. Reading strategies is still important to about one out of five parents. Math strategies is there as well. Homework help, a sliver. And transitioning into middle school, which we'll kind of talk about that throughout the next couple of slides. You see there, that starts to hit. And then managing behavior at home went down a little bit, and mental health resources about the same. For middle school, transition to middle school, so you would maybe think those are the seventh grade parents. Dual enrollment, maybe parents looking ahead. Volunteer opportunities, SAT and the standardized tests grew by 5%. We also talked, heard from our middle school parents who are interested in graduation requirements and promotion requirements to get to the next grade levels. And they also had an increased interest in family fun learning nights. High school, dual enrollment, SAT and ACT prep, graduation and promotional requirements, promotion requirements, always big. Saw a big jump in community service projects for staff and students. And volunteer opportunities went down a little bit, and then here we have Focus Support, about the same as it was last year. So what we're always trying to figure out, and what the schools are also trying to figure out, because every school's a little bit different, is, you know, what's the best way for them to communicate with the families? And, you know, no surprise, email and text messaging are the top. Again, these weren't the only ones, the only options. There were, you know, robo calls, there were, you know, one-to-one calls, there were educational apps, but, you know, email and text are, are the ways that our, our families like to, to have messages that have some sort of importance sent to them. Elementary had, the flyers being sent home is popular. And then also, middle school and high school, you see Focus. And our goal with Focus is obviously to see that number kind of grow in the coming years as we kind of lean more onto what that platform's available to do. Then we wanted to see how they reach out to us. You know, the school, each school has its own website, obviously, there's the district website. We wanted to see if they're using that, those platforms to get information about their child's education. And we saw a decrease in elementary by about 6%, somewhat significant to me at least. Middle school again went down by 5% and we saw an 8% drop for high school. Have you visited the Open Enrollment Choice webpage on, on the sites? You know, we always want to let people know that there's plenty of options when it comes to education, different schools, different programs in different schools. And so, you know, this year, we saw a 4% increase when it comes to elementary usage of that. A small increase when it comes to middle school and high school. So either they've already experienced it and don't need it anymore, or they're unaware of that. So that's something that we still want to, to focus on. And then how do you receive interim reports and report cards? The, you know, Focus is, you know, taking a big leap this year in a variety of ways, but that's, we've been able to get grades, you know, previous this year, but you see a 3% increase for Focus when it comes to elementary. Paper copies is, is still very large. And again, on this question, parents could mark more than one answer. It wasn't just one or the other. And then we do have 3% who say, for whatever reason, they don't receive them. You know, middle school, we see a, a huge increase when it comes to Focus. And then also, paper copies go down, and again, 77% in high school versus 58% last year, which I would submit those, that middle school and that high school number's pretty good as far as focusing, on Focus for the, for the grades. So how many times do you access your child's grades and attendance through Focus? So we, in elementary, you know, we saw about, you know, an increase of double, one to five times, so about at least once a week or so. You know, 9% did it six to nine times, which is often, 13% did it 10 or more. And then you have a third roughly that never do, and so those are the ones we want to reach. That's a pretty big change from the year before. This is middle school, and we kind of did it differently as far as the questions being asked last year to this year. So this is why you see below, it's daily, weekly, or monthly. That's how we asked it last year. And then obviously this year, we asked it number of times per month. And so you see again, 39% of people said they go there at least once to five times a month. And then 8% say they never do for middle school. And so you can kind of see what that is compared to, to last year, where about 45% went weekly, 21% monthly. High school, 46% go at least, you know, one to five times a month. Never is 11%. Again, that's a number we like to get down, but it was at 17% last year, so. Couple more. How does your child's teachers communicate with you about your child's progress? Elementary, you know, 37% said weekly, 14% said daily, you know, 4% said never. So that's a lot of communication back and forth. When it comes to middle school, again, you see 20% weekly, 3% daily, monthly is 22. Once or twice a year, you see 32%, never is 23%. Now, you could say that as children and students get older, they take on more of that responsibility themselves. And so when the parents are having that communication with the teachers, it may be dealing with an issue, not actually getting the grades. So that's just anecdotal on my part, but you do see in middle school and high school kind of less engagement with the parents because the teachers are talking directly with the kids who are now more responsible for their education. High school, you see 2% daily, weekly 11, monthly 18, and then once or twice a year is 36%. So, and 33% never. And again, that's for the, the high school with the, the communication from teachers to, to the child's parents. The office staff at my school is polite and is helpful in answering my questions and concerns. And we often say that, you know, when somebody walks into our, our school or our, our building here, the people they meet first are going to give the impression of what the school district is. And so, you know, 85% at elementary, 76% at middle, 75% high. High schools say that they are always, you know, answer questions and concerns and are polite, so that's, that's good to see. Obviously wouldn't increase that, but it's a good number, I think. It's a good place to be. And are you satisfied with the relationship and communication you currently have with your child's principal? Elementary, 86%, about the same as last year. See, middle school, we had a 13% jump from last year to 80%. And we had a significant jump also for high school from last year to this year. You can see in middle school and high school, some of those had comments only and, for last year. And so that is kind of why the percentages may be a little bit different. So the jump is there, but a lot of those that were written comments weren't actually a yes or no answer. And there you go. Thank you for your time, attention. Any questions or comments, feedback?
Ms. Jenkins jumped to the microphone. Ms. Jenkins?
Yeah, thank you for this. Obviously, it's a very important tool, and I think that's pretty evident by some of the jumps in improvement of communication. And I think it's reflective, the fact that the schools appreciate parents' responses, that they're reading them, and they're actually using it to modify practices and behaviors. And so it's always positive to see that. Thank you.
Ms. Campbell?
Yes, I just, I can't let this conversation go without sharing one of my favorite memes of the year, which I think I actually saw on Ms. Jenkins' Facebook page, which was, "We've been trying to reach you about your BPS parent survey." You know, like your car's warranty. I know that there was some resistance to the persistence of the district, but that's what it takes to, because this, this feedback is very important. I would just have one suggestion off of that, is sometimes that, that kind of push is received better from the schools themselves. And once upon a time, years ago, I know that there was like a little contest kind of thing at the schools and would say, hey, if we get the highest percentage, then whatever. You know, because sometimes they like that better from the schools themselves instead of the district.
Love the feedback. We, we did the contest again this year, and the schools were partnering with us. But as you saw the number, I was trying to goose it up there because we want parent engagement.
Right, right.
And so, lesson learned. So I will be, I will be kinder and gentler to our community next year, but
No, no, take advantage of it. Take the meme and use it.
Because their voices matter, so.
Yeah, no, I think actually you could take that meme and use it, you know, we've been trying to reach you about your
I'm gonna go door to door.
Yeah, there you go. No, it was good. It's important. And, you know, and there was just one little myth that went out that, you know, you say it's anonymous, but they keep asking me to do it, and it's like they're tracking that I haven't done it. I'm like, no, actually, I filled it out for two children, for both of my children, and I'm still getting it, so that assured the person. But, you know, it is absolutely anonymous. We're not tracking who's sent, who's not. We're, we're, we were all being reminded regardless.
Yeah, I, I received the same email, which I laughed because I, I filled it out on both of my children. So I think the survey's very insightful. It gives us some information. One of the things that I saw that I thought, hey, this is probably something that we need to be aware of, is that less people are using or looking to our website for information. And there's a wealth of knowledge on the website, so I think that's a reminder of maybe just how we communicate that out because there are so many resources out there, and especially when people are questioning things as far as curriculum and things like that. It's all out there. It's on the internet, so I'm just directing them there. So, you know, I, I made notes of a couple of things that I found significant really was that. More people looking to the Open Enrollment page, that page has had an uptick. And then there was 34, I think it's a 34% of parents in elementary never visited the Focus app, which is scary, I think, in some aspect, because once they transition into middle school and high school, those paper report cards are far less, so maybe just helping communicate the Focus app. And I know I get home probably three or four times a year, the information for my child's Focus, so my school's doing an exceptional job. But I, I want to make sure when they get into that middle school and high school, it's not like, hey, no communication. We don't know what's going on with our students' grades, so, but, but yeah, great job.
Thank you.
I'm good.
Yeah, I think that everybody needs to understand that our tick was going to hit right where it was before. And then there was a, some people that had made some social media posts out there about it being negative, and then it just went whoop right off. And so for me, in the communications platform, if you're a parent, you should be able to respond to the survey of the school that your kids go to, right? So I think that we have to find a better way, but I'm okay with sending out the texts and sending out the emails and stuff like that because we truly do, like you said, need the, need the engagement and everything else. So I can see where if you fill out the, the survey and then you're getting it again, that's one thing. But like, hey, parents, we need you. You know what I mean? We need your input so that we can make our schools better, and so please do that. So I really appreciate everything you guys did. Appreciate the opportunities that you guys are always engaging into new communications areas, and I appreciate it. So anybody else have anything that they wish to speak about? We can move on. You're off the hook, Mr. Brune.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So next topic is Board process, Budget Process Review. Ms. Han, you have some very exquisite things to go over with us.
Yeah, exquisite. I hadn't thought about this presentation as being exquisite, but that sets the bar kind of high.
Very interesting and exquisite.
Interesting, I would, I would agree. So Ms. Sinsky is going to do the bulk of the presentation, and she's making her way up. We're going to run these two kind of together, the budget presentation and roll right into the millage presentation there, somewhat related.
Perfect.
I'm used to it being at a certain place. There it is. Good afternoon, Board. I wanted to give you a, an update on where we are with the budget process. As you know, the legislature finished their business on May 5th, and so I just wanted to give you a quick update. But first, this is one of my favorite quotes. If you want to take a minute and read through it. So, you know, Donald Rumsfeld was the 13th and the 21st Secretary of Defense. He was both the youngest and oldest SecDef to serve. Known unknowns can easily be anticipated based on past experience. So we know what the unknowns are, but the unknown unknowns are the ones that really pose the risks and the threats because we just have no experience with what those can be. So based on that, I'm just going to talk about knowns and the conference report, FEF. And the conference report, FEFP highlights. So I know I talked a lot about, you know, the FEFP being kind of shaken up and turned upside down and all those kind of things this year because of FES. And the House wanted to roll most of the categoricals up into the BSA. The Senate wanted to keep, and they wanted to roll everything up to the BSA so it was easier to extract dollars for family empowerment. And then the House, they wanted, I'm sorry, the Senate wanted to keep all the family empowerment below the line so it didn't get commingled with our dollars. And they kind of came to a compromise. And so you'll see that less categoricals got rolled up into the BSA. But it's, it's a, it's about sixteen million dollars. So when you see the BSA and then you see headlines like, you know, BSA increased twelve percent, highest ever, just remember that the funding compression, the teacher salary increase, instructional materials reading, and teacher classroom supply assistant categoricals were all rolled up in there. So we really aren't going to be able to compare previous years. We're going to have to start and look forward. The thing to really look forward next year is if the BSA starts going down, because that means things are starting to get crowded out and maybe some of those dollars for some of these old categoricals go away. So good news, the teacher salary increase. And then you can see, I mean, they said one point four one percent needs to go towards. So even though they're rolled up in the BSA, there's still requirements that we fund those. So not as flexible, but it's great news that they're going to give the teacher salary increase. And the better news is they're going to allow school districts to distribute those dollars based on what makes most sense for that district. So they're not going to have all the different rules like they've had in the past. The remaining categoricals, educational enrichment, and that is replacement for supplemental academic instruction, mental health, safe schools, student transportation. The class size reduction, that went down. They decreased the funding factors for all the different grades when they came up with that. And let's see what else. They, the one thing that I'm really excited about is they have an educational enrollment stabilization fund, which means if the FES vouchers exceed projection, we're not going to have a proration and the school districts won't be cut. So if the FES vouchers exceed projections, then they'll have like three hundred and fifty million to cover. So that, that's great news, I believe. And then we don't have to worry about getting prorated. So there, you know, I think the House and the Senate heard the CFO saying, hey, you know, you can't prorate the districts and then the FES gets to stay the same. So they really took a look at that and they broke things out very well. It's pretty clean. So I'm excited about that. Any questions on that slide? And then, so this one isn't as good as news, the charter school capital outlay. I know I talked last time about the one point five millage levy that we, the districts normally get. You know, they, so it's in law now that the charters will get a portion of that one point five, and it's going to be over five years, but it won't begin till twenty-four, twenty-five. So we're safe this year, but we can expect that our capital dollars, we will be sharing a larger percentage with the charters. And then this is one that we have to dig into, but it, we just need to dig into it because it could be significant. This, for cert tax, we, the proportion that we used to provide the charters was based on FTE. Now it's going to be based on capital outlay FTE, which is a smaller amount. So when you reduce the FTE, so let's say if it was sixty thousand, you reduce it to fifty thousand, the, the charters stay the same, so the percentage grows, and then we'll have to share more with the charters. So we'll have to take a look at that and see what that means for us.
Cindy, can I just real fast, so for the glide path, it looks like that five-year plan. So it starts with twenty percent the first year, then it goes to forty, sixty, eighty until, correct? Is that right?
Correct.
Okay.
And then also in the language, there is funding that the state funds PICO was what went to charters. And so there is a whole calculation in there where, you know, if, if the state continues to fund the PICO, then, you know, it would be a calculation, you know, we, we get to still subtract our debt payments. And then, right, and then it, it's just a calculation, but you're right. It'll be twenty, forty, sixty.
Okay, thank you.
And I don't know how much, I don't think we'll be too bad off as long as they continue to allocate PICO. But if they stop the PICO, maybe they may start doing that or reducing it, then we'd be paying that to the charters.
Cindy, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I think one of the bills I was looking at had that starting in twenty-three, twenty-four. So we, we still have to figure out which year that starts.
Right, I, I went and looked again, and it's in gross, the Senate Bill twenty-five zero-two has it in there as twenty-four, twenty-five. But we will double check. And then this last one is also good news for the district, where before we would get these payment vouchers from, to, you know, for, here are all the vouchers of all the scholarships. And then we would have to take a look and go, okay, is this person really in a scholarship? Are they really in a district school? And then we'd have to do all the vetting and then send it back up. So this language takes the school districts out of being the middleman, which is very good for us. So the EDR, the Office of Economic Demographics Research, will do the forecast. And the DOE will take care of the reporting and the scholarships and where everybody is and leave us out of all of that. So our funding won't be affected. And then, because we were required to project, and that's pretty hard to project, especially this year, of how many students that are already sitting in private school are going to take a scholarship. And so I'm, I'm very happy that they're taking us out of that mix. Any questions on that?
Will the, will the state then be verifying what you said just a minute ago, which is, you know, that it's not somebody getting a scholarship and they're sitting in our classrooms? Will they, they're handling that verification process also?
They're, they're handling all of that.
Okay.
So. So that's good news for us. And then this is the budget timeline that I've presented over every time we've given an update. And in April, you can see that we're doing a pretty good job keeping up with what we wanted to get done. We are wrapping up the matrices with all the directors. Legislation session ended May 5th. We have the conference report. And right now, we're prioritizing, what we're going to move to do is after we're wrapped up with the matrices, we're going to take a look at the, the labor. And then we're gonna, and then we have all these new initiatives that are being submitted to us. And so we're going to take a look at all those. What are the costs? What are, you know, increased costs, bills, must pays? You know, FRS is a big one. We still, you know, self-insured medical is a big one that we need to take a look at. So we're going to pull all that together, see how much dollars we think that we have to use, and then allocate from there. And I, we'll be, I'll go straight over here. And it's kind of like the bucketized approach. And what we're, when I say that, what I really want to do is, you know, make sure that we project what the expenses are, what the new initiatives are. And then we're really using a collaborative, collaborative effort with everyone to make sure that we're funding the things that make the most sense, to make sure that kids get the best education possible. And then we're, so what, what I mean about bucketized is we're going to have different categories. The first two buckets are the ones that have to be covered first, making sure that we have a healthy financial condition, and then making sure that we can open the doors. So, you know, the cost, the increase for utilities, self-insured health insurance, FRS has to be covered. And then we have other categories that we're putting all these things in. You know, employee compensation raises. Are we going to do compression corrections, align pay to industry standards? What are those things? Academic, what are we going to target? I know I hear a lot about making sure kids can read by three, third grade. Target initiatives to increase student achievement. So what are those things? Behavior, athletics, maintain facilities, security, innovation. I think innovation is so important because we have so many systems that are just manual. I mean, it makes no sense of how manual we are right now. So we really need to invest in, in the innovation. When you go into a grocery store now, it, it kills me, but my daughter loves it. You know, there's only one line that they check you out, but she loves to swipe everything, so she does good. And Essar, what are the great things that we're already doing that we might want to continue? So there's all kinds of things that we want to bucketize, put them in the different sections. And then we're going to get, you know, all the Title I, all the, you know, look at capital, look at all the different funds, all the possible revenues, and then figure out what makes sense. Millage, you know, who, what can pay for what, and, and then the priorities. And then you guys are going to be part of that as we bring it to you when we have these meetings. I think that's, Sue, you're next.
Okay, could you, the next slide, please? Thank you. So I want to talk a little bit about the departmental budget process going forward. Cindy's team has been meeting with each of the departments, and we have literally been going line by line with our departments' input as well as the budget office input. And they've done a really good job trying to find those areas where maybe we've double budgeted. Perhaps it's budgeted in my budget and also in the risk management budget type of thing. Or have we budgeted for phones we don't use anymore? Though, all of those questions. And so I've been really proud of the work that Cindy and her team, specifically the budget office, has done in asking difficult and annoying questions of all of our departments, including mine. So I think that is going to produce some good results. But what I would like to do as a kind of a manner of practice is for each of our departments to come to the board and do a kind of a fifteen-minute overview. This is what my department's about. These are the major programs that we're doing. This is how I'm funded. You know, I get, in my department, several different revenue sources. Want to talk about how those are deployed throughout the operating budget and how all that works. And I think most of our departments do have different types of funding sources. We've been doing some collaborative work with our federal programs so that all of our departments who have programs eligible for federal programs kind of understand the big picture. So I, I feel like this has been a good effort so far, getting us to where we all kind of understand each other's budgets. And we've done a deep dive into the little items. But I also want to present to the board and the community what we are doing collectively from a department point of view. So this is a new process for us here at BPS. And so I thought I would go first as the facilities person. I like budgeting, so I'm comfortable just kind of being the guinea pig for the process. So I will be in front of you next Tuesday and talking about my budget. You will have a, I would consider it a draft line item budget. We're not, at this point, asking for the board to approve the budget. We're just showing you what, what it is at this moment in time. We still have to right-size it based on the revenues that we have available. So what you see in the line item budget next week for me might not be reality by the time we get to the June twenty-seventh workshop and you have the proposed budget in its entirety before you. But at least you'll have a familiarity with where we started and what's in my budget and what's in all the department's budgets. The, the, the budgets are difficult to read. I mean, Cindy talked about a manual process. I mean, my budget has got, I don't know, there's probably about eight different cost centers, and there's thirty-two pages. And there's a supplies line item that's about five hundred dollars on probably twelve of those thirty-two pages. So it's kind of hard to really consolidate. So we're also concurrently looking at how we can make that a little bit easier to read without having to pour through thirty-two pages of minutia. But I do want to be transparent about what's in our budget so the board and the public can see what's there. So we'll be doing that as you have reserved on your calendars for several Tuesdays going forward from May thirtieth through June, working with our departments to kind of schedule those so you'll have a cadence of budget presentations by our departments. And I think that's it. So hopefully that's something that you all would like to see. It will be a little bit time-consuming, but I, I think it'll be worthwhile.
Anybody else have any conversations wrapped around this?
No, I, I am, I'm excited about this process. I know it's, it's very tedious, and I know it's a lot of work for each department, but I think it does really, truly create a, a nature of transparency to our public as well. Just on that glide scale, it starts with a twenty-three, twenty-four school year. So just so you know, I looked it up on the, just wanted to tell you that.
Okay. Yeah, it's, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. And then none of our questions were annoying.
We can discuss that offline.
I think, I think for, for me, thank you, Ms. Sinsky. I think that moving towards this as a model has kind of scrubbed out some of the things that we may be able to take a look at. I think moving to this model, moving to more transparency like we talked about, creating more of a understanding budget for our consumers will get us further with the transparency end. And I also wanted to say as part of that, as long as we bring forward the, you know what I mean, all of the spends inside the department besides just like the high level, each one of the sections that we go through. So thank you so much, just like we did when I made those requests before. So we'll talk about it prior to it. But I'm excited for the sixteenth. Ms. Sue is actually taking the lead on this and for the, you know what I mean? It's, it's going to be a great thing because I think that this is long overdue. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Sue.
All right, next up, did you want to speak to, oh, you're still going?
I'm still going.
I know, I was just, well, it's, it's the next topic, so I was going to introduce it. The millage implementation update. Ms. Cindy?
All right, so millage, it's coming soon. And we're very excited about it. Lot of work to be done. The voter approved for the millage November eighth, twenty-two, focused on recruitment and retention of teacher staff with competitive salaries. And everything revolves around student achievement. It's one mill for four years of our tax roll. We're going to receive the initial revenue in December twenty-three. And charters get a, a share based on their enrollment. And we are going to, the goal is, as long as, you know, Russell Cheatham and his folks, I don't know, they, they're like MacGyver. Because being able to get the payroll system to actually do this twenty pays is, talk about manual and a lot of work to, to do. Hopefully, we can automate it as we go. I, I have confidence we're going to get there, but it's probably not going to be pretty. But August thirty-first, we plan on having the first pay of, of dollars to our, to our employees so we can let them know now so they come back next year. And then also, you know, there were, you know, discussions, and we really looked at the cash flow that's available because, you know, our funding is very, very, half of our funding comes in December. So when you're trying to fund, you know, millage and, and you're not getting those cash inflows, it's difficult. However, we can cash flow with capital dollars, and that's what we're able to do. So we are very confident that we're going to be able to cash flow the dollars for the August thirty-first payment. 31st payment. And then just as a reminder, this is how the millage was broken up. The majority of the dollars go to compensation and benefits, 16% student programs, and then technology, 4%. And right now, this is one of those revenue sources for, to look at those buckets, so as we look what makes the most sense, what to fund. So, you know, student programs, that hasn't been decided, and the compensation supplements and the retention and recruitment hasn't been decided yet. But we are gonna do the payments, which is the majority of the dollars.
I'm gonna pause you right there, just 'cause I, you know, I think anytime that we can bring this conversation up and share it with our employees, the better, and I don't know how many of them are gonna be watching this later, but when we were in our schools on Friday for a school lunch hero day, I actually had a couple of really great conversations, one with a group of custodians and one with some of our cafeteria workers who are still, some continue to be unaware that this is coming. And I would like to say, I told one of my principals, I think I just saved you a custodian, because someone who'd been with us for 22 years was getting very frustrated, and I was like, can you just hold on, because next year, you know, how many years have you been in the district? She said 22, okay, next year, it's already been decided, you know, it's already been with the MOU, it's gonna be $4,400 extra for the year, and she didn't know. And that's not anybody's fault, but I just want to think we have to continue to put out there, letting people know, for our veteran teachers, it's gonna be almost $7,000 a year additional. And so, we, you know, if people are sitting there on the line wondering, you know, do I need to leave, do I need to look for something else, when this is coming, and it's coming soon, then thank you, it is not lost on me, the work that your division has done, that Mr. Cheatham's division has done, and everybody else in HR is going to, has done and will have to do in the coming days to get this started as soon as possible. So, but I just, you know, I think it's really important every time we can highlight that it's coming, and that it's coming soon, and it will make a significant difference, especially for our employees who have been with us for the longest amount of time.
Yep, and I think that one of the things we have to be careful on is actually stating dollars, because the millage hasn't come through, and it's estimated to be more than what we had seen, but we haven't seen it yet. So, I think that there are gonna be some very pleasantly surprised teachers. I think the key, though, is that the millage doesn't come out for, I think, another month or less coordinating, and we'll talk about that in a second, but just wanted to make that great point, Ms. Campbell, and I think we do have communications going out this week after we decide that we're all good, so thank you.
Okay, so let's get ready. This is a four-year program, and again, I'm highlighting the 20-pay supplement for employees, and it's, you know, based on years of service. It's never been done, highly manual, time-consuming, but we're gonna get it done, 'cause it's what we need to do. But as we do this, we also need to make plans as how are we gonna budget and expense these, how are we gonna create the reports, because reports are gonna be required, we're gonna need to make sure that our oversight committee can follow all the expenditures and make sure that we clearly spend 100% of those proceeds on the areas that we told the community that we were going to do. So, that's, you know, super important. We're gonna have audits, we're gonna have oversight committee, we're gonna have questions from the board. So, as we're planning this, I just wanna make sure that we have thought out simple structure format reporting procedures, so it's clean and everybody can see where everything's going. So, in order to do all of that, we are proposing that we have a millage team, just three people, one person from payroll, one person from HR, and then a grants person that is more with the budget and able to grasp all of the entire program and be able to work with the oversight committee. Again, you know, maintain a culture of audit readiness, if you're always ready for an audit, that means you're doing things right, easy access for information. And the thing that I want to do more than anything for this millage, and with the new initiatives that we're doing in the budget, is to start really tracking the return on investment. So, we, you know, the millage is for four years, but if we want to continue, you know, we need to show the community that, hey, look at this, we did this, and this is the benefits. So we need to make sure that we remember that, you know, a promise made is a promise kept, and I definitely wanna be able to show that we are producing the desired outcomes for any programs that we use within the millage. Okay, any questions on this slide? And then lastly, we're gonna have a millage oversight committee, and I think it's super important, just like Ms. Hand's, I-
ICOC.
ICOC, we're kind of doing, mirroring her processes and how she does all that important work. And this is incredibly important, because this is a lot of dollars that the community trust is with, and it's a great, a huge responsibility. And so we're going to have an oversight committee, and that's gonna increase visibility, transparency, build community trust and support. And, you know, and then it's gonna be impartial, so there's no district staff, anything like that. And the application window is going to open, hopefully, tomorrow. And the goal is to have the Brevard Schools Foundation is, they offered, or they're, so they're vetting it, so they're going to look at those, they're going to, their committee's gonna take a look and provide their inputs and recommendations, and the hope is it goes to the board by July 11th, and we can get this committee set up and ready to go.
Ms. Hand, did you have something you wanted to say?
No, I think Ms. Losinski covered it. We're very excited to get started on all of this, the payouts to our employees. Mr. Brune is ready with some information to our employees that will go out tomorrow and let everybody know what's expected, and then we'll be doing some additional media and such to just kind of make sure we put out the word about what's happening with the millage payouts. And then our Citizens Oversight Committee, have been working with Ms. Kershaw and the Brevard Schools Foundation. Their board is going to be the group that vets the applications and makes a recommendation to the school board. So, Tammy's been working with us, and we're going to be launching that application process probably tomorrow, and be open for about 30 days. We think the closing date will be around June 9th to give the Schools Foundation folks an opportunity to review the applications, and we're looking for seven to 11 members for the committee, similar to the Certex Oversight Committee.
Nobody else? All right, thank you. Next topic is community summit planning. Ms. Hand?
So, I'm gonna see if I can change, oh, look at that, it worked. Can change the slides from up here. All right, so Mr. Susan had mentioned this concept a few meetings ago, and worked with him and Tammy to kind of put together a concept for the board to discuss as to how we might do this. And so, the first kind of discussion point is whether these community summits will be full board and community members, or whether a board member will take a lead, or some hybrid approach where a board member is a lead and one or more board members participate. So, that's one question. Another question is the topic areas, and we have some on later slides that are ones that we've talked about, such as faith-based organizations, healthcare organizations, economic development-type folks. So I think there's some very broad-based topics out in our community where we can gather a group of folks that have an interest in those topics. And then, in my mind, the board member who is leading this and the participants would jointly identify the topics of discussion and kind of set the agenda. We, as the staff, would work through the logistics of those meetings and then schedule the follow-up. So I would imagine with all of those, there'll be some, hey, we ought to do X, Y, and Z, either on our part or on their part, and have some tracking of action items and follow-up later on. So this is what I would call a straw man proposal, just to get the discussion started as to how the board might wanna work through this topic.
I think, and if you remember, I'm not sure if Ms. Jenkins was on the board yet, but Ms. Campbell, if you remember, Ms. Belford had sent out and said, hey, can we pull together the community mapping, right? And I think that part of this is, is that we each have an organ, an area, right, whether, if we go to the veterans, which we were talking about, and I'll go into depth here first, then you have VFWs, American Legions, and organizations that are inside of yours. I mean, Jean, you have the 45th Space Wing and Patrick Air Force Base in yours, right? So there's just all these dynamics that are inside of there that fall into those, and then having a summit where they come together based on that. So, when you first, if you can put that back up, Mike, so that I can see it, I wanted to kind of go through that. We would identify a topic, and most of the topics, they all have to pretty much follow the strategic plan, find out some initiatives inside of that. Then we identify whole board versus individual boards. There might be some stuff that's just specific to your area that we might wanna do, and you can utilize this plan through process. The other piece is identifying the participants and stuff like that in there, which we just spoke about, the community mapping, and then through that, then meet with them and suggest a agenda. The ones that I have suggested had all been groups that have approached me saying they wanted to have this, and they had a series of agenda items that they wanted to speak to. So anyways, with that, if you wanted to continue to go, I just wanted to kind of tie that up.
That kind of wraps up the overview. We had looked at a couple different scenarios. This was the, a little bit more detail on the veteran and military discussion. And Mr. Susan, I think you had some contacts with folks in that arena that perhaps wanted to get together with us and had some potential discussion topics. And then the last slide was just simply some additional topic areas that we thought the board may be interested in engaging with those sectors of the community.
Yep, and so for instance, if you'll go back one, Ms. Hand, if I could explain the, how this connects to our strategic plan. I sat in there and gave this to Tammy the other day, and Tammy said, wow, if you would explain it, it would, it makes it a whole lot better, right? So besides me getting up there and doing a whiteboard, basically, we have, some of our strategic plans are retention and recruitment, you know what I mean, program expansion, program alignment, and all of those things inside of our strategic plans. So for instance, you have retention of students. One of the things that we have right now is, is we are trying to be competitive with charter schools and stuff like that, so if a military family comes here and they say, hey, I'd like to go to school, if we have an onboarding package ready to go as part of it that is in line with the needs of the families that may change every year, then we'll be able to attract most of them. We already have that, and it's a great process, one of the best ones is over here at Quest. But how do we do that to make sure that all of our principals understand it, and how do we improve it year to year, 'cause we don't wanna just be stagnant? The other thing is, is like recruitment of employees, so like we could do a better job of having that pipeline coming from the veterans who may be retiring and stuff like that. So for your career and technical programs, many of our veterans organizations that are out there, you know, they're coming off being, you know, F-22 fighter pilot mechanics would be perfect for going into our aviation program and stuff like that, but we have never really tried to connect that from the bases as they're retiring as an option to be out there. So, how that component works, you also have it for ROTC instructors, and many of the wives of servicemen are very degreed, and they would be able to fill as teachers. The office that I work at, three of the owners of the company all have wives, they're all military, and all of their wives while they were in the military are, were all teachers. So there's an opportunity to attract maybe some of them that were, that have degrees to come to workforce too. So there's this whole dynamic inside of there. The other thing is, is that Kennedy Space Center and 45th Space Wing could give on-the-job training to many of our workers. Many of our employees could work over the summer. You have program alignments for like girl state, boy state. Just so you guys know, many of our programs like girl state had a low participation this year, so they were saying, hey, how can we actively do this? You know what I mean, get it into the schools? And I think that that's just having a place where we can discuss that. I talked to the director of that. There's many scholarships, as you guys are aware of, so like the American Legion and those guys give out $1,000 scholarships for giving it. The problem is, is as a former history teacher, they would come to us in March and say, hey, we got the scholarship, and it's about the American Revolution, but we taught that like six months ago. So I couldn't stop my class to teach a class, to have them write a scholarship thing on it, because it was not pertinent to the timeline. So working with them on alignment of where in our curriculum the dates that they need those and what we would be creating. And then you have STEM opportunities through expansion, like cyber patriot, drone programs, all of that, that we could utilize in a better way if we could understand and connect them. We do a good job in many of these, but it's a way of us getting to do it better and expand in those areas. So, that's, I didn't do a good job of explaining how they tie together, and I can do it for all the other ones, but I think that that would be some of the topics, and the idea would be that we would have them come in and do like a, hey, we're gonna set up a summit, and then we would announce a day in the summer, and then they would meet then. So I think the question that Ms. Hand has is that in many of these, as we're moving forward, did you guys wanna meet as one or as five? And I said that we probably all should, but being the fact that I don't wanna speak for the board, we could notice it for five, but then it just be an informational thing, that if you wanna come, you can, and if you don't have to, if you don't want to. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so thank you for the question and for the idea, and I think it would be a very positive thing. So, when we talk about whole versus individual, I'm leaning towards whole, because, you know, we don't all have the same kind of community connections, and so we each have different strengths and different areas of influence, but it would, so that will, I think it'll assist for us all to be a part of that, to help build those connections with the areas that we may not be as connected with. And also, it just, it develops a more unified appearance to the public of us as a board, and it also makes sure that we can all participate, so that it's not one member coming as the person who has all of this information about this particular area. That being said, though, as I said, we all have different strengths. I think it would be good for each of us to take the lead, a different board member to take the lead. I think that's where Sue was getting to, in depending on the area of as far as develop, meeting with the key stakeholders, developing the agenda. I think that would be really good to just kind of rotate that, you know, which board member will be taking the lead. And then just advertising it, and as you say, if it's something that we can't get to, it's not like a board meeting where we're gonna be voting, whatever, it's something that won't work with the schedule, we'll try to work around as many board members as possible, but I think that would be a good idea for it to be all of us.
If I could speak to that real quick, and let me just align it. I truly believe that this should be not as much of a person on the board, as much as the superintendent collaborating with the groups, and have the board as support with our individual areas to drive it. So for instance, and I'm sorry, I just wanted to kind of jump in there, 'cause I didn't want it to get down a tangent, sometimes by the time I speak, it's like, takes forever. But like career and technical, we all have areas in our, like you have Palm Bay, right? And I'm not sure which one of you has Kirby Street, but that's a major manufacturing center, right? And having those connections to yours, bringing them to the table, and then allowing you, Sue, to be the communicator for that meeting, I think would probably be the best. That way, it's not like somebody's being in charge, does that make sense to you? 'Cause like faith-based organizations, I have a ton of them that I work with already in the center part of the county, and it would be weird, you know what I mean? Does that make sense to you? And I shouldn't lead some of them, so.
Yeah, I think, I think we will need some assistance from board members as to who should be invited to the table, so that will be helpful on your part, and we can certainly handle the logistics and the meeting preparation and bringing in the correct staff folks depending upon the topics. And I do think it's important for us to frame an agenda so that we're not just talking randomly, that we at BPS have, these are the five things we wanna cover, and then the participants may have five things that they wanna cover, so that there is a targeted agenda with the understanding that we will come back again next year, or next six months, or in some period of time, and reconnect, follow up, and potentially have a new set of tasks. So that's kind of my thinking on it, Mr. Susan, if that makes sense.
Yep, and I think that if we work on creating those community connections inside of our district based upon the strategic planning and everything, it's kind of consistent with what we had prior with the community mapping and some of the other stuff. So I think it's a good, could kind of flow, and I just wanted to kind of jump in there and do that. So, Ms. Wright, you had something to say?
No, I love this idea, I'm definitely leaning towards the board as a whole. I think just from a logistics standpoint of how we're gonna look at creating a summit over six different topics, it might be better suited for us to narrow it down to four and maybe do one a quarter, because it sounds like it's going to be a pretty large undertaking for our staff, as well as capacity and all of that. So I think, I like the idea of us all being involved in this, because we do all have different relationships and different strengths, and so I think if, my vote would be, hey, let's all be part of it, and, I mean, there's six here, it's, what are your thoughts on how many, 'cause there's different categories here- Because there's different categories here, and I know that's, could become a conversation to have on which ones we want to look at or not look at, or do we want to do all six, so.
Yeah, can you pull that back up so I can see it?
I have it.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, we can, you know, the faith-based and the veterans were the first ones. Maybe we just get through those, and then we see how they are, depending on how large, and then we add the others as we go, something like that?
Yeah, I, I would suggest a pilot project would be good to start. Let's see how it goes.
Yeah.
So maybe we start with the veterans ones, and then depending on how that goes, we set out the next ones. But I think this aligns with our communications and, and connections to the community, so I think it's good.
So I, where I was going with this while I'm listening to this is, this sounds like it's involving the board in the process that was already taking place with the previous superintendent, which is a good thing, establishing those community connections. My feeling of this is similar to what Mr. Susan was saying, is I actually don't think this should be driven by the board. The board obviously needs to participate with the communication, or with the relationships that they have and, and communicate that to the superintendent. And I want them to, I think we should be involved and be there. But I think the purpose of this is to ensure that the people who are participating, and the organizations that are participating, that their voice is being heard. And that the superintendent is there to be the liaison to communicate what's happening within the school system, and the board is really there to listen, to help give them guidance in case they want to make some kind of decision going forward. So I don't really know how I feel about like a individual board member taking on a topic, because I, I don't really think that's the most beneficial way of using this. I think we should be there, and we should participate and, and invite all the connections that we have, so that way it's the entire county and not one area. But I think this is, I think this is a role that's best for the superintendent, so those people can be heard.
If I could speak to that real quick, one of the problems we have is there's a going thought process in the community with many businesses that their voices aren't heard as they make pitches to the school districts and stuff like that. So this kind of gives that direct pipe. So I think, I agree with you, whereas the superintendent should be the person that kind of facilitates. But I think the board's role is to listen and then push the initiatives that are kind of agreed upon by the group, as far as, from a policy perspective, if anything needs to be changed, and from a budgetary perspective, if we need to add some revenue to something. Does that make sense to you?
Yeah, I, I think the pilot project will illustrate how that works. Because I, I think, I think you both have very valid points, and I think it will depend on the discussion topic. Some of this might be, you know, a staff-driven program that is just really easy for the staff to, it's a staff function. Some of it might be a discussion on the policy level. So I think you could have either of those circumstances. And so I think the superintendent driving the, let's have the meeting, board members participate in the participants, and the subject, the topics for the agenda, and then we go from there. But I, that's why I think that the pilot project will have some value, because I do think there might be policy-level conversations, and there might be, you know, technical, staff-driven type conversations, too.
Sounds good. We're good?
Yep.
All right. Next up is Imagine Language and Literacy?
Yeah. Sorry. Can I just ask one question?
Yeah, sure.
Sorry. I'm like, where, where is this landing? What, what, I don't feel like a redecision was made about this, so that's where I'm just.
So I was going to meet with Sue, talk about the veterans as being the pilot project. We would put together that and then bring it back to the board as a plan.
Okay.
And then you guys can, we can hash it out, make sure it's all okay, and then move forward with it.
Is that, okay. That's what I'm like, I'm like.
Because I think we just said, we're not going to, it's not going to be led by a board member, and then you're leading it. So I think.
I think the reason I'm doing that is because it was my idea and initiative to start creating these, so I should be kind of the one that puts it together with her.
Well, and we would all, at that point, be tasked with going back to our connections within our areas of where we're at, and bringing in military veterans, those types of people in our area, correct? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
I'm just trying to make sure I'm on the same page on where is this landing and where are we going? I love the idea. I think we serve a huge benefit to them, they serve a huge benefit to us, and I think it's a good partnership that we just need to connect. I, I like the idea, my mic isn't even on, I'm sorry, I was, I'm yapping. I like the idea of this being a collaboration with all hands on deck, so to speak, because you don't want it to fall under one person, and if that one person isn't here, then what happens?
And there's no way they can do it.
And that goes for all of us, because we're all not going to be here one day. So it needs to be something that we set up and organize that will remain past us and help benefit our county. So I like the idea, but I just was trying to figure out where is this landing now that we're, we've discussed it, so.
So I would say my first step would be to ask Tammy to reach out to each of you and say, if you have connections in the military-veteran community, please let Tammy know. And then we'll start to build a roster, and then start to reach out to those folks and build an agenda. And we'll set a date, and we'll kind of work from there. Does that sound okay with everyone?
Sounds good.
And I think, I think the idea is, is to grab people who are a part of the process of the school district. Like, we have a lot of veteran friends that are in the community, but they may not be the ones we want to community map. It might be your American Legions, it might be your 45th Space Wing, those kinds. You know what I mean, that have part of our strategic plan and can add to it, so that's all.
Sorry, thank you for the clarification.
Yeah, I forget about making the details. Sorry about that. All right, next up is Language and Literacy?
Anne Skinner, come on up. So I'd like to introduce Anne Skinner. She's our district ESOL coordinator, and she briefed us on this PowerPoint and project a week or so ago. And it was very informative, being the facilities person. I learned a lot about our ESOL students, and I appreciated the, the depth that you went into to show us how this product is used and how you are helping our students in that arena. So she will give you a briefing on this, this system.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for having me today. Like Sue said, I'm Anne Skinner, the ESOL coordinator. We, in Brevard County, are part of this Title III Part A English Language Acquisition, Language Enhancement, and Academic Achievement Grant. This is our Title III federal grant. In this grant, we support our English language learners, and our goal is to help them access challenging state academic content, increase student academic proficiency on their ELA statewide assessment. In addition to, our ELL students have the WIDA Access for Ls Assessment and Standards. So we're also looking at growth with their WIDA proficiency. Since 2017, in Brevard County, we have increased over 1,000 students in our English language learners. We classify the English language learners as either LY, who are active in the program right now, or LF, that means they've graduated from the program per se. We've dismissed them from the program because they're on grade level, but we still monitor them for two years. We still support them, making sure their grades are on grade level, make sure they're still passing statewide assessments, compliance-wise, just to make sure they're still on track. So in those numbers, we have included both our LYs and our LFs, our students. And you can see that we are on a trajectory of uptick as we're going to just continue to grow as our, as this population grows. Previously, the ESOL department has supported these students with two computer programs, Rosetta Stone for our fourth through 12th graders, and Learning A-Z for our fifth, our kindergarten through fifth graders. Rosetta Stone is a language acquisition program. It is word calls, like flashcards. And Learning A-Z is a supplemental literacy program. In the fall of 2022, we started looking at our Ls subgroup data. In Brevard County, our graduation rate of our Ls since 2017-18 dropped almost 10%. Our third-grade ELA proficiency of our sub-L group, our English language learners, also dropped in third grade from 2017-18. We also looked at our WIDA Access for Ls proficiency growth. So we're looking at our learning gains for our Ls. And in 21-22, our learning gains was below 60%. So we started looking around. We, we felt like there was a need for a more impactful program, and something that would make a bigger difference for our students academically. The Bureau of School Improvement recommended Imagine Language and Literacy to both Endeavor and Creole Elementary School when it was reached out to them to ask what was an effective program for our Ls. So the Bureau of School Improvement gave approved Creole and Endeavor's requests, and both Creole and Endeavor purchased license for all their Ls in their school from this recommendation. I also reached out to like sizes and other ESOL coordinators around the district, talked to other people in the ESOL departments of other programs, and every one of them came back to me, Imagine Language and Literacy. So in November, I purchased 800 individual licenses for 800 of our newcomers, non-English-speaking students, K through 12, in our schools. So we're going to take and look at Miami Dade, Broward, and Seminole County. Right now, Imagine Language and Literacy is in 50 districts throughout Florida, and Miami Dade, Broward, and Seminole have all been using Imagine for more than five years. The reason why it's also in 50 districts throughout Florida is it's, right now, it's the only program out there that does both language acquisition and literacy together. They're not separate. It's, it's combined, and the data is together, and teachers are able to track it better, and it's all in one place for them. So we can see that growth together. Since 2017 and 18, Brevard was pretty close to Miami Dade with our graduation rate and our Ls subgroup. Now, Brevard, right now, if you combine our LYs and our LFs, we have 4,233 English language learners, or around about 5% of our student population for Brevard County, where Miami Dade has a much higher percentage with 98,000. Broward has 42,000, and you can see Seminole County is a little bit less than us at 3,600. So where Miami Dade stayed about the same with their graduation rate, again, Brevard dropped 10% with our Ls subgroup. And now we're also below the state average, or the state level for graduation rate for our Ls. So looking at this data, we looked at Imagine Learning. Imagine Learning is a large company that has many different types of material and courses in it. And we, in the ESOL department, is looking at purchasing only Imagine Language and Literacy under their ELA and literacy section of their company. So why Imagine Language and Literacy? It covers grammar, it covers oral vocabulary, and it covers literacy skills, including all the foundational skills, fluency, and comprehension. But what makes it so successful is it also comes into 15 home language, these directions and supports for the students are in their home language. And then the lessons itself are in English, because it is an English language acquisition program, so they are acquiring English. But as they acquire more English, their home language supports lessen. So it's like, it's a scaffold. So some of our Ls will go back to their home country for a couple months in the summer. And if their language acquisition, their English level is lower when they come back, it'll adjust for that. And then it'll retest them as they work through the program and start taking away that support as they no longer need it. So it's really fluid, and it's really nice for the students as they're acquiring those supports go away. But if the supports go away too soon, there's also an interpreter button that they can push, that the directions will go back in their home language compared to other programs. So we purchased those 800 licenses in November, and in November, we did teacher training on it, and we got the program out there. And you can see, as our usage went up each month, by April, we reached our goal of 60 minutes a week for those students using Imagine Language and Literacy. So we have over 103 schools using this program right now with our 800 licenses. On the left side is the chart of the top schools that has the most usage, that have 15 or more students using it from their school. For example, Medallion Intermediate has 29 students right now in Imagine, and they are one of our top schools in their usage. And you can see it's gone above the 60 minutes, because these families are taking advantage of it and using it at home, at night, on the weekends, trying to help those students acquire their English. The column, or the chart on the right side is also our top usage, but these are our schools that have one to 10 students in the school using it. For example, McNair Magnet has eight, Sherwood has six. So yes, they have a smaller amount of Ls in it right now, but they're also taking full advantage and using the program as much as possible for their students. Again, we do have 103 schools using it, and many of them are in that 60-minute-a-week average. These are just the top 10 of each of these categories. So our current plan right now is we have 800 individual student licenses between November and June 30th. These are for our non-English speakers, plus Creole and Endeavor also purchased their student licenses. Where we'd like to go is, we'd like to expand this and put all 3,500 of our LY students in it for summer, for Summer Enrichment ESOL Program, for our High School Senior Program, and to make sure that it supports our students over the summer, and they don't have that summer slide. Then we'd like to start our new contract July 1, again, to support the students, so there is, that summer slide doesn't occur, and so that it starts right away in August. So when the teachers come back, it'll already be in their schools, and their kids will already be enrolled in it, and they can start working on it right away in August. With our federal grants, sometimes the funding doesn't come until end of September, October, and then it's November till you get the programs into the schools. So if we used our federal grants now, we could start the renewal process and start the, the contract in July 1, and there wouldn't be that loss of coverage, and there wouldn't be that gap for our students and our teachers. So again, our goals and our outcome always for our Ls is to improve their academic proficiency on ELA state assessments, their overall English language proficiency and growth, and their graduation rate. And we do this by expanding this program, so that all of our Ls would have access to it. We continue the program implementation for the teachers with learning opportunities, data chats, and using the direct instruction lessons and the reteach lessons on this program also. Thank you for your time today.
Ms. Sue, you had something to say?
No, thank you, Anne. Other than, just wanted to let you know, this is on your agenda tonight under the procurement to approve this, the purchase of the software.
Anybody have any questions?
Yeah. So when I started with Brevard Public Schools, we had about 70 different, or I'm sorry, 60 different languages and dialects. Where are we now?
We're, we're still at 60.
Okay. And I was just curious, because, I mean, obviously, we had that dip in slide because of COVID, and I'm sure the supports were probably not super adequate during that period for our English language learners, which can contribute to that, but I was curious if whether or not that was part of the problem. There was a slide that had mentioned the 15 languages that it supports. Do those happen to align with the top languages that we hear, have here in Brevard?
Yes, absolutely. So our top five languages in Brevard County right now is Spanish. Portuguese has actually surpassed Haitian Creole this year for the first time. Haitian Creole and Vietnamese are our next two languages. Chinese is also one of our top five, but actually, let me take that back. Arabic is, has surpassed Chinese now. So Arabic is our fifth highest language. The one program on there that they don't have, that we saw an uptick in this year for the first time, is Ukrainian, because we have a lot of wonderful families that are supporting our war refugees. Some of our Ukrainian families speak Russian, and some of them speak Ukrainian. So if they speak Russian, it is supported on here. And the company is working on Ukrainian for, to support our war refugees coming in, and our families that are supporting them. But what we've also been told is, what their students are doing are using just the English version only if their language is not on here. Like you said, we do have 60 languages. Tagalog is on here. Tagalog is on here, but there are other languages on here that aren't, that like Swahili is not on here, and we have a couple of Swahili students. So, they would just use English, and their rate of growth is not as fast, but it's faster than any other program that they've used, we've used previously. And this is a K through twelfth grade program. So, we're using this kindergarten through high school level because a lot of times, our secondary kids, our seventh, eighth graders come in, and their content area teachers aren't teaching them second grade or third grade grammar that they need to help support language acquisition. So, this is filling in those holes and those gaps for them.
Is there an option to this tool for access at home over the summer? So, and I understand that, you know, if we're not providing the technology and they don't have it, then they can't utilize the service. But is there an option if they do have access to that technology, if they could utilize it?
Yes. This program, it's one hundred percent completely supported if they choose to use it at home. And when I was showing that usage earlier, the average is sixty minutes a week in school, but some of our families, you can see, are using eighty, a hundred, a hundred and twenty minutes a week because they are using it at home, at night, on the weekends. And that was the idea behind starting the next contract in July one so that students would have it all summer long, and there would not be a break in their usage if they choose to use it from home.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. And I remember Ms. Skinner, back in the day, first meeting you at Endeavor when we were doing our coaching that year. So, you know, actually, one of the stats that shocked me was the number of students at Endeavor, five hundred ninety-five. I mean, that's, I don't know, I don't remember what the student count is there, but that's well over sixty percent of that student population.
Well, Endeavor bought a site license, so they bought it for everybody in their school. Not all five hundred ninety-five are using it, but they do have over two hundred and forty students in the ESOL program right now, and they are our top school with four ESOL teachers because of, and they are continuing to grow. So, they are our top elementary school.
And you bring up a good point because what is the minimum number of students you have to have to have a full-time ESOL teacher?
Fifty, five-zero.
So, our schools that have lessons, fifty students are, this is really vital because they don't have that dedicated professional that's coaching them every day.
Right. And so, a lot of them, schools have to have fifteen, one, five, fifteen students in the same language to get an ESOL IA at their school. But they have to have fifty to have an ESOL teacher of any language. So, a lot of times, these students, five students in a school, six students in school, they don't have that support of IA or an ESOL teacher. So, this is really helping our schools and our families have something that meets their needs right away, right where they're at, because they take a placement test, and it actually puts them in a certain level for oral language. It puts them in a different level for grammar, and it puts them in a different level for literacy. So, they're on three tracks in all three of those areas to help support their growth.
Yeah, I think that's fantastic. So, you answered the question of, I had seen, you know, can they access it at home or on their own? And it sounds like right now, they have while we have this license. In the elementary schools, is this, and I think I've seen this, when they have their iReady time, are our ELL students doing this instead of iReady?
That's the goal for them, especially our non-English speakers because right now, they can't successfully handle iReady because they don't understand what it's asking them to do, they don't know what they're doing in it. So, this will be in replace of it for now, but then, as they become limited English speaking and they gain more language acquisition, then they can kind of do a combination of both, or they can get one done first and then move to the other one. Because some of our ELL students are using Lexia to support them in their tiered intervention also. So, but this is the only one we have out there that's in their home languages right now.
Yeah. So, I very much appreciate the data from the other districts, and I know this is a long game plan, but I would very much appreciate any short-term progress that can, that is noted, that we can get back. So, you know, I'd love to have some follow-up next year, but sooner if possible, since we have these PM one, PM two, PM three with some results for the current students who are, who have been using it.
So, right now, PM three is happening with FAST with our K through two this week, and that's why we don't have data for you today. But the third through sixth graders, Endeavor has already seen some promising results from it because, again, most of these students started it during PM two in January, and so, we are hoping to have some data come out of it in the next week or two once the testing finishes. The testing window ends on the twenty-third.
That would be fantastic. So, even if it's not a presentation, if you guys could send that to the board with the, I mean, as much as we could apples to apples to students who had it versus the students who didn't have access or just the growth, I'd love to see that.
Mr. Jean?
Well, thank you so much for all the information. I have a little bit of knowledge here. I've proctored those WEDA tests at Cocoa Beach. So, the data looks good, looks promising. I liked all the information, appreciated all the information that you've given us in this, in this presentation of just ordering exactly what we need from this company. I think that's important. Answered some of my questions, actually. And it's a wonderful program. I've done some asking on the street, so to speak, and I like where it meets the student, where they're at, and it's interactive. It works with, you know, reducing their former language to English at the right times. I think it's, I think it's good, and I appreciate your effort in this. I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Skinner. You hate to, I would hate for language to be a barrier in how well our students succeed in our school system. So, I'm all for this. I had one question in regards to something you said, and I don't know the answer to it, and I'm hoping that maybe you do. But to get that, the ESOL IA or the teacher, you gave numbers that were specific, needing fifty students to get an actual ESOL teacher, correct?
Fifty LY, so fifty active students. So, we do screeners, and we say, are you, do you qualify for the program? Do you have a language acquisition need support? And if they do, they become LY, which is active in the program. So, right now, we have thirty-five hundred active LY students in our district. To get a ESOL teacher allocation at your school, you have to have fifty of those in any language, right? So, Endeavor mainly has Spanish speaking, but University Park has Arabic, they have Portuguese, they have Spanish. There's multiple language, and they have a teacher with over fifty. Cambridge just earned their second ESOL teacher. They're over a hundred. But to earn an IA, you have to have fifteen of the same language. So, that kind of gets a little tricky with the way the federal law goes, the money goes because if you have, say, twenty students or thirty students, like, but they're not the same language. Quest is an example. LoveQuest, they are such a multilingual, multi-international school with all their different ones, but they don't have fifteen of one language. So, they didn't, they don't earn an IA because of that caveat. But then I have, like, Riviera Elementary down in Palm Bay. They have fifteen Spanish, but they also have fifteen Arabic, and they've earned fifteen Portuguese this year. So, they actually earned three IAs because they're fifteen in that one language. So, it's, it's a different way of work.
But even though they may have a dedicated teacher, we do have ESOL endorsed teachers, and so, their students are assigned, so it's not like they're being not served at all. They just aren't being served with a dedicated teacher. So, their ELA teacher will be ESOL endorsed so that they're being served.
It's just interesting to me that those numbers and how that breaks out in the fifteen. So, you answered my question, which was, you know, what happens when there's more than fifteen or thirty, or we're going in those increments? So, you're getting three IAs at that point versus one teacher.
Or, the other thing is if you have fifty, five-zero, students have the same language, you earn your second IA in that language. So, for example, like Endeavor, if they, they have more than fifty Spanish, but they would earn an IA at fifteen, and then they earn a second IA at fifty.
Okay. All right. Thank you for the clarification.
Anybody else before I go? Thank you. So, like, do those IAs speak directly to the language that they're covering? So, when you sent that one in, the Portuguese?
So, yes. So, they are hired based on their language. We have a Haitian Creole IA down at Heritage High School because they have earned an IA in Haitian Creole. They have to be able to speak, read, and write in both languages.
Yeah, I remember when I was teaching night school, and we had a family that moved in, and they were trying to take the test in Creole, and the only place you could take the test was in Miami Dade. So, they had to go down south and test. So, there are some of these language barriers, so thank you for doing that. What is the hurdle that you guys run into? Is it, like, when you guys implement this, I'm sure that we're not all the way a hundred percent, what hurdles do we see in that space? And is there something we can do as a board to assist you in that?
Right now, the first step with any program when you have one is usage, right? Getting it out there, getting the teachers trained on how to use it, getting all the stakeholders trained in how to use that. So, that's where that expansion goes next year because this year, our training went with the ESOL teachers, with the IAs. But then, again, you talk about schools like Andrew Jackson or someone who has ESOL program there with ELS, but they don't have someone. So, my next round of training would be like recovery teachers or English teachers in those schools, content area teachers that work with these kids but don't know the program yet to kind of encourage it, right? Because we see the schools that have someone to check on them and encourage them, "Hey, how are you doing with that?" Yes, right, correct. So, that's one of the things we're working on. The other thing is this program, because it also has fluency, they have to have microphones in their headsets. So, we, the ESOL department purchased those and got those out, and if we're able to expand the program, then we'll continue that to support the schools and the families. The headsets wouldn't necessarily go home with the families because we would need them the following year, but it helps them in the schools using that.
And I think also, you were mentioning the stakeholders and the teachers, and maybe having those parents come in also and get trained on what they can do to help out. Suntree Elementary had a series of families that moved in, and they had no, they had one person in the whole school that could speak Spanish, and they had a bunch of families. So, the secretary up front was working to try to get those, go learn Spanish as quick as she could. I looked on the, on the RFP, and it listed a bunch of private schools, but then it has us paying for it. Can you fill me in on that?
So, the ESOL department is a K through twelve program by a federal grant that we support both charter schools, private schools, and public schools. So, we have federal grant programs to allow the private schools to know what we have to offer and our systems and steps for going through that. So, the private schools who do go through that, we do provide them this program.
So, do they contact you to be a part of that list? Or do you just blanket it and then offer it to them?
No. So, we, in January, have a federal programs program for our private school where they come in, they learn about all of our programs, what we have to offer, and then they choose whether to participate or not based on the laws and regulations of the federal programs and all our requirements. And then, they reach out to us and say, yes, we want to participate. So, for this program, because I was only starting with eight hundred licenses, and I was only starting with the non-English speaking, if they had a student that qualified for that as a non-English speaker, they reached out to me and said, "I would like this student in this program," and we added them.
Awesome. And then, one of the things I wanted to say is you had a, your business card at the end being digital is really cool. Who put that together for you?
So, my amazing parent liaison, Raphael, he did that for me. He's got it on his, like, sign out, when you sign any email, he's got that for him.
That's what I saw it as because I see us try to do it, and it's just like, it doesn't look as good. So, we might have to ask.
Yeah, reach out to Raphael. He's amazing. Him and Angelina have expanded our parent liaison section of the ESOL department so much this year, and they're doing so many great things for parents that it's just impressive.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. That's all I had. Does anybody else have anything? Okay. All right. Wrote so much on my book. I can't find out where we are right now. Next board topic is five-five-one-one Dressing and Grooming. We had, if you guys will pull up the actual policy, we had given board direction in the last meeting to not have, like, leggings inside there and stuff like that. Somehow, it made its way back in. So, what they did is they took and put, are you coming up to the Dressing and Grooming? All right. This is, all right. Let's see here.
I'll go first if you want me to on this one. Just, I have a whole.
Good. Yeah, that way you can just knock out. So, why don't we, why don't we let Ms. Wright pound at it and then?
All right. So, I read through the two thousand two hundred and fifty-six student comments that we received. So, you know, that was several pages, lots of time to read through what the students really felt about this dress code policy change that we're discussing. And there were some common thread through there that I saw that I'm like, this one keeps on coming up, keeps on coming up, keeps on coming up. So, want to discuss those things. The first one is, believe it or not, I can't believe I have to say this out loud, but the furry dress attire, that came up in that thread. I don't even know how many times.
It's like the first comment.
Well, but it, it went all through there. So, referring to dog collars, referring to tails, referring to ears that students are wearing. There was one student that even actually referenced the fact that this is causing a lot of the issues with behaviors and bullying. And I thought, well, that's a, that's a really great perspective from a student to be able to recognize that these are the students that are being picked on because of choices and what they're wearing. So, I think it's something that, as much as I don't want to necessarily enter this into our dress code policy, I think we maybe need to discuss it at least as a board because if it's causing students to be targeted, we obviously need to look at that. The other thing that was commented on here, a lot of the females feel that the dress code policy is targeted towards females. So, I think that it just, again, conveying to everyone that we need to, across the board, if a male is wearing a tank top, he gets the same treatment as a female wearing a tank top. And the same with, like, PE. There were comments in there that were, you know, male students are allowed to take their shirt off after PE when it's hot. And I'm like, that's not acceptable. They shouldn't be doing that. So, just making sure that our schools know that we're going to stick to this dress code. Strapless garments, that was one of the comments that I read through here a couple of times. I think it's important that we write into the dress code policy that they are acceptable for formal wear at school dances. Most of the girls are wearing dresses that are strapless when it comes to school dances. I saw lots of comments about wanting to be allowed to wear hats. That was a common thread. Want to be able to wear a hat. There were a couple of arguments that were maybe valid arguments on why a hat would be beneficial to a student. So, again, something, there's arguments on why it wouldn't be as well. So, so, just a conversation that we need to have. So, these are the notes that I'm just, that I wrote down. Tank tops, that's one of the common ones, too. I think, we live in Florida, I think it's acceptable for a student to wear a tank top, especially with the heat that we have here. So, I would like this board to maybe possibly consider allowing tank tops into the dress code. I think right now, it's specific to the width of the tank top. But again, when it comes to males, it seems like it's allowed, but it's not allowed for females. So, I think just generic tank top and taking away the dimension of the strap would cover it. All right.
Do you want, you want to just list these, and then we'll go back through them?
Yeah, I guess. Yeah, that's fine. All right. Boxer shorts not being allowable shorts for lower garments. That's something that I read in here a couple of times that, that we are seeing in the schools. The students are saying females are wearing boxers as acceptable shorts. We wouldn't allow a male to wear them because they're considered an undergarment. We shouldn't allow a female to wear them as lower garments. So, that's something I think we should add. Well, I, that is true. Okay, on page eighteen, this is just a typo, I think, honestly, under A1. It talks about, well, hold on. The word sunless is used, but I think it should say unless instead of sunless. I'm trying to find where it's at, though, because now that I say that.
Oh, yeah, in the new one.
In the new one. Okay, that's, I'm like, where? It's a typo. So, it says sunless, and it should say unless instead of no S. On section B three, where am I at? Sorry, I need to, give me one second. Sorry, I need to go back to where I was.
Page nineteen?
Page nineteen. Oh, the word modest. Yeah, I think that that is a very subjective word, and my idea of modest and your idea of modest might be different. So, I think removing words that could be interpreted and used against a student is probably a good idea just because of how some people view things differently. I can't find this, but there's a section in here. The students, there was common thread there. They should be allowed to wear, they should be allowed to wear shirts that show parts of their midriff. That was, you know, they want to be able to wear low shirts, and I know that that's the trend. I, I don't personally want to advocate for that. I think that they should have to cover. Yeah.
Low shirts, high shirts.
No, like a, like a half shirt, like a.
Well, you said low shirts.
Sorry.
We don't know the tech.
So, that was part of it. C one. All right. So, the sports bra part doesn't really make sense in this section just because we're talking about lower garments. So, under the new, I guess it's C, I don't know if this will be.
I think that's a typo because when you go to the clean version, it's not there.
I'm looking at the red line, so. Maybe I need to operate off the clean version. Okay. It looks like it has been taken off of there. It just wasn't redlined on the red line, so that's why it's confused. Crocs is another one that's in here. So, we have in here that we don't think students should be allowed to wear crocs. It's a pretty common practice for kids to wear crocs. So, I don't think there's a problem with them wearing them. I don't know what the board feels. It's just an elementary, but even elementary students wear crocs. So, I don't, I don't think, I mean, I have elementary daughter, and she wears crocs, and never an issue there. never an issue there. Um, costumes, I, I don't know if that's something that, that was kind of a thread that I saw too in the student comments about costumes being worn to school, um, as dress attire. So I, I know, it's all these things you have to talk about. Platform shoes was in there a couple of times. It wasn't, it wasn't as prevalent as some of the other things, but, um, platform shoes was talked about. Sagging pants was talked about quite a bit. Um, which we have a sagging pant policy, so. So, all right, I'll, I'll let somebody else go on what they're thinking and changing.
Do you want to go through that list and pound through it, or do you want to have everybody else speak?
Well, I guess we all-
Just got a list.
We all need to have the discussion and then come back to consensus.
You had three or something?
Yeah, so in B for upper garments, I feel like number one and three just need to be struck through and, and not be in there. Um, because I feel like they're already encompassed by two and five. Um, so we're already talking about the fact that strapless garments are prohibited, tube tops and halter tops are prohibited. Uh, shirts must adequately cover all undergarments and/or the areas undergarments traditionally cover. I feel like it meets the needs of one and three. Takes out that subjective part that we're concerned about with the word modest and low cut necklines. Um, there would need to be an addition of, um, covering the midriff and waistline if that's something the board desires because that's not technically in there. Um, I think that was probably being met by number one, but to me, number one wasn't really explicit. Um, the other thing too is in C for lower garments, number one. Um, form-fitting tight spandex leggings. I think if we just cross out the rest of that sentence and add must be opaque, um, that's more realistic and, and with the times. C one.
C one.
Uh, get rid of types of clothing unless proper outer garments cover mid thigh length or longer. Um, the whole argument about leggings is like, that's, that is beyond an acceptable trend nowadays. And if the leggings aren't see-through, I don't know any kid that's wearing a shirt that's mid-length on top of it. Um, that doesn't, that doesn't really make any sense. So if the, if the point of it was to not get kids dress coded over wearing leggings, um, we should just add the words must be opaque and not worry about the upper garment that's covering the rest of it. And and then some of the things that Ms. Wright had mentioned, um, I think it's good to listen to our students, but I don't think our policy should necessarily be too indicative of a trend that's going around. Like the fact that random students are wearing boxer shorts at one particular school is not a reason to put it in this policy because I feel like technically the lower garment part of this should already kind of ex-nay that. Um, hopefully. But again, definitely want to take out the subjective words in one and three of the upper garments. Um, there was another one that I wanted to commend you for being so creative on, on your word selection, but I kind of lost it. But thank you. Other, otherwise I like all the other revisions.
Okay.
You may just need to be closer.
I'm trying to write them all down too as we go.
The, I just need some help and guidance with the, the generalized words from the board.
Yeah, what we're gonna do, because this is why I was saying like, what we should do is go through, hang on, what we should do is go through each one. But we're gonna go through it all, then we're gonna go back to one of them and then we're gonna pound through it. So that way you can get through it.
We'll get there.
Yeah, just, I wouldn't write anything down until we come back for the second round. All right, go ahead. Mr. Trent, you had to go?
So, um, it was about some of the words too. So if we, if we look at B with the, um, the upper garments, I, did any other of the one, two, three, four, five in there talk about necklines? Because that's kind of what they're getting at there. So I know Ms. Jenkins, you said to take that out, but that's a big issue at the schools is, is not so much. I mean, we, we're talking about the word modest, but we have to talk about something if we allow tank tops, which is all great, like them, but, um, they need to stop somewhere. So I mean, we, we, I do believe we need to talk about uh, necklines somewhere. So we need to keep that in. If you come up with a better word than modest, good luck.
What about tank tops are prohibited, low neck, or sorry?
Wait, wait, we don't want to go start-
Right, so it's, so if it's in there, you know, that's why it's in there. Um, some of the things that I had seen in, in talking to, um, staff was, um, uh, hopefully they, uh, you know, kids can wear hoodies, but just not on. And they just said it was such a security risk. Um, uh, in an issue of, of kids wearing hoodies when, when something happened and they bring them in and they're trying to figure out, was that you? But you know, they're wearing hoodies. So in, in any of the, uh, in the dress codes, sweatshirt's not a problem, but the, the hoodies and the common areas is, is gotta be down. That was a request by a few. Tanks. Yeah, I think both boys and girls can wear those, have been wearing those. I, I don't see any boys with spaghetti straps, so I don't, I don't think we have to go into that. Um, but, um, you know, so far, I mean, if I feel uncomfortable up here, you can sense it. It's always been an uncomfortable situation as a male teacher talking about, uh, dress codes, all right, for, for both guys and girls, students. I don't want to see guys bottoms either. Um, so, uh, the, the thing about the, um, uh, boxer shorts, i- if we deem that, or anybody at a school grounds deem that as underwear, it's a, it's the same category as the, the sports bra. Regardless of how many layers you have, if we deem that that's underwear, then that's, it's already talked about here. So other than that, I just want to hear what the rest of you have to say.
All right, Ms. Campbell?
So I very much appreciate all the, um, I didn't get through all two thousand and something lines, but I, you know, by the time I got into, you know, several hundred of seeing those same patterns. Um, you know, it's interesting because the perspective just often have to reflect on the process because some of them were reading through it as if we were about to change it to that, not realizing, no, that is the existing.
Yeah.
That is the existing policy. Um, so clearly it's not being enforced consistently across. And I understand why. That's just one of the reasons why we're cleaning it up because we can't have a policy that says you can't have weird colored hair anymore and, and enforce the rest. It, it just, it makes it challenging. Um, but also I, you know, it was interesting to see some of the same students who said, we should be able to wear whatever we want, but then say, but you can't wear a tail and ears. So I'm not a big fan of the furry movement, but at the same time, if ears means a headband with pointed ears on them, I, it's a hair accessory. So I, you know, tails are different and ca, students meowing and barking at other students, that's not cool, but that's not dress code. So, you know, but when I get down to the changes that we've made, here, here's a couple of questions just that I had. On A1, when we talk about, um, head things, one of the things said sweatbands? And I'm just not sure what the problem with a sweatband is. Um,
For gangs, I think.
Huh?
When you looked at that, I think in the other one, there was, it was related to some of the gang, um, conversation in the upper one. So I think that's what that was.
Um, yeah, so, and then when it go down to B, something happened, oh, with four. So we used to have, uh, in the old policy in the red line, it said, um, excessively large or baggy clothes, which may conceal dangerous items or be a safety hazard, shall not be worn. You know, I had, there were, I saw tons and tons of students saying, well, you can't, you said the clothes can't be too tight, but then they can't be too baggy. And I think we missed the point. I mean, excessively baggy to me is the pants are falling off. You could get, you could literally get a gun in the, you know, go down, just, you know, I mean, we're not talking about just loose. I like to wear baggy clothes too. Um, but I, I think a lot of the, and it's, there were so many misunderstandings and maybe some of it had to do with schools' individual dress codes. I even saw a student say something about, why can't we wear V-necks? I'm like, nowhere does it say you can't wear V-necks. It said, no, low cut. So unless a school has decided you can't wear V-necks, and I can't imagine a school that just has that, a blanket V-neck, uh, policy. Um, I, I think some of it's just a misunderstanding, but I, I don't know if, if we're good with the taking that out because it didn't get put back in somewhere else, excessively large or baggy clothes. Um, so I don't know where, where, if we want to leave that out, put it back in. Um, but I, I will tell you, B five, the way it's written right now uh, in the red line, it says shirts must, I, I just, we, I'm seeing a consistency that I would like us to reconcile and I have an idea. It, whether, I don't know if it'll be popular or not, but, um, so in B five currently with the red line, it says, um, shirts must adequately cover all undergarments and/or the areas that undergarments traditionally cover. So that says to me that midriffs are okay. Um, so we're saying as long as whatever you have on top covers wherever your undergarment would be, it's okay. But then down in C, we say, but if you have on leggings, you have to have on a shirt long enough to cover your rear end. So I'm, here's where I would suggest that we level out on this is that I just want the tops to meet the bottoms. I just want them to touch. And popular or not, if you've got on high-rise jeans that come way up here and you have on a short shirt, it touches. If you're wearing, if you're, you know, out of style like I sometimes am and wear low-rise jeans, but you have in a longer shirt, it touches. You know, if you've got guys wearing, you know, boxers way up high so that you can see them above their jeans, but they've got a shirt long enough to cover, you know, it touches. I just want the tops to touch the bottoms. And I know-
Can we put that in there?
Can we literally put that in there in a nicer way? You know, top, upper garments must meet lower garments. We don't have to have this long complicated thing that we used to have that if you have your hands raised or whatever. I just want the tops to meet the bottoms.
I actually love it.
So, I mean, say it. More policy.
Three Bs.
Nice, but that, that is where I am. And, and so I, I don't necessarily think, even though I, it's not my preference, I don't necessarily think girls have to wear shirts, or boys, if their boys are wearing leggings, um, that go down to their mid thigh. But I just want the tops to touch the bottoms. So that's where I am on that. Um, if we're gonna put, I, I'm not a big fan of the Crocs because of the safety thing, but if we're gonna leave the word Crocs in there, can we please spell it, uh, without a K? Um, for just, for, because that's how you spell it, I think. I'm pretty sure. Um, and then I, we have this paragraph about gang stuff that got added in. It's highlighted in yellow on the red line. And I think it's just an awkward place where we put it. I think maybe it belongs down somewhere else. Um, so, uh, yeah. So that's, that's my first, um,
Who knows? It's probably Neil's phone again.
Okay. That is my first swipe at it.
Good. All right. So, um, one of the things that I was looking at is, is the dress and grooming. Grooming seems to be a little bit out there as far as a name. So if we could call it the dress code policy, that would help out. Just feels kind of odd calling it grooming. They did it. They did it already. Good. That is, oh, thank God. I didn't see it.
Even though there were quite a few comments that wanted us to address grooming, did you notice that? Students were saying, you know, there should be some rule about wearing deodorant or something. We can't do that.
Yeah. It's not a dress code policy.
All right. I think you guys have covered pretty much all of the other things that I had on here. Thank you so much for going through the detail. What I'd like to do is go back to you, Ms. Wright, and just start pounding away at it if we can. And I think the first thing that you put up was the furry dress code. I'd like to talk about that myself. The reason is, is that this is like, my daughter, who's the number one lobbyist for elementary schools, um, students in the, in the county, consistently says, I'm tired of the furries. And I'm like, what are you talking about? Like, where is this? So I'm all about trying to find a way that that is not acceptable in any way because what it does is they then do the barking and all the other weird stuff. So like, this is something that comes up at our dinner table at least every month. And so, um, like if there's a way that, I understand that your concern about it was them wearing something else, but like, at some point, we've got to, you know, curb that behavior. Is there a way that you guys suggest that we can not have that in there? I mean, it already should not be allowed, right? Ms. Klein?
Well, nothing.
Like, I, I don't think, so it's a-
Ms. Klein? Just hang on, Ms. Klein, Ms. Campbell.
Girls are wearing headbands and other objects that represent a male.
Yeah. Yeah. And then they're barking at people and stuff like that.
I have heard any barking.
I have. It's enough to where people are talking about it in our thing, so.
First time I've heard of the furry movement, so.
Really?
Oh.
I have not heard of any of this.
What hole are you living in?
Living in there.
Nope, I have not. So this right here is the first time I've heard of the furry movement. So I'll have to look into-
I, I recall back when Rosette Brown was Principal McNair and I was area superintendent, we had, um, the first furries.
And first litter.
I, I remember when I was, when I was in high school, people wore dog collars, but that was as far as it went.
Well, they weren't trying to be a dog.
So what I'm saying is there's a majority of the board, I think, that wants to move forward with not making this appropriate as dress code. Is there a way you can find to put it in there to make it work?
I will assist Mr. Reed as his new designee on this policy as of today.
I, I just, I want to mention though something because, I mean, there is the fur, and there's people wearing tails and barking, but there, there have been for years, if you have a, you know, and I know you have a teenage daughter, um, Claire should saw them all over. The girls were just wearing headbands that had animal ears on them. Right, it was just, and, and they weren't, there are plenty, and I want you, because I want you to consider our little elementary school girls, where they're not trying to be a furry. They just, it's a headband and it's cute and has flowers or it's got a unicorn or whatever. They're not trying to be an animal. They're just, they like the headband. So are we, you know, so that's what I'm like, where, so if we want to say you can't wear a tail because that's a tripping hazard or whatever, or it, you know, it's fine. I just don't know if we have to go all the way to, um, curbing. For some students, it's just what they think is cute and there's nothing wrong.
Here's the bottom line. It's inappropriate, like utilization of like behavior in a school and we just need to end it. So if there's a way that you guys in your infinite knowledge of dress code, uh, violation, whatever, can you figure it out?
We can. Um, I would just ask is, and maybe you can get consensus from the board, just due to the timeline for the student code of conduct. It's very important that this policy get wrapped up and that's a big question mark you're asking for our feedback on. We do have the opportunity to revise the administrative procedure. And we could get this policy right following Neola, which tails and furries is not in Neola. But we could add that to our administrative procedure to really pinpoint that if, if we wanted to try and get that policy right. Otherwise, we will, we will give it our very best stab at the next meeting, which won't have discussion, if I recall.
There can be discussion if anything's changed and then we start over again.
We got to get it right today.
That's fine. No furry behavior.
But, well, there's, there's, yeah, I was gonna say.
No furry dress code.
I hear two things going on, the dress code and then behavior of our team acting like an animal. That's a separate issue than just wearing the headbands with the cat ears.
Can I jump in here, please?
Just hang on, just hang on.
Mr. Susan.
Can I, can I finish?
You went like back and forth like four times.
Because I'm asking questions of staff, Ms. Jenkins.
You went after Ms. Campbell again.
Ms. Jenkins, just let me continue here for a second, then we'll come to you.
Point of order, Mr. Susan.
So, Mr. Reed, um, in that thread, what are you looking from us so that we can deliver that right now? You're looking for us to try to give you some more direction or what would you need from that?
Yeah, I mean, I would hope that we could get the, the words that you're all going to be happy with. So clothing to emulate a non-human, something that anyone could agree to, that, that you could give me guidance to that, that-
Yeah, I like that.
This is, like, this is not rocket science and it's not an epidemic. If you don't want tails on kids, just say no tails. This is ridiculous. This conversation about furries is insane and a culture war conversation. The barking has nothing to do with that. If you guys are keeping up with the trends, it's this weird, ridiculous thing that kids are doing in middle school, all children. Barking and meowing at each other. It's weird, but they're doing it. It has nothing to do with a kid wearing a tail. It's all the kids, unfortunately. Speak to your middle school teachers. They'll tell you. Um, this is, we're over complicating this. You don't want to wearing tails, say, no tails. End of story.
Accessories, number four. No tails.
No, there's more than tails. I mean, it's not, it's not just tails. And, and I would say that there's a disingenuous comment, Ms. Jenkins, when you start saying that it's only in middle school, in the fact that my daughter's in elementary school and been talking about it for three years. And then there's also others that are around the thing. This is an issue. Let's just deal with it. Let's not degrade it. Let's-
I, I liked Mr. Reed's comment.
I like it.
Because honestly, that covers other things that could come up in the future.
Yes, yes, I like it. Good.
So would you repeat that back, Mr. Reed?
Yes, please.
Uh-oh, roll the tape back. He's like, I don't-
He might be watching the video.
Yeah.
Emulate non, uh, dress of which emulates non-human characteristics?
Love it. That covers it.
Could we cover it with, you talked about we need to dress, somebody said we need to dress costumes.
That's non-human.
Can we put it along, well, not necessarily, it could be human, but could we say, you know, no costumes or, and then that, you know, costumes are-
Well, that could be considered a costume, right?
Yeah, but she's saying that there are other costumes that are not-
Are you talking about, when you talk about costumes, I didn't see those. Are you talking about, when you talk about costumes, I didn't see those comments in there.
It, it wasn't a ton of them, but I mean, and there are times of the year where obviously a costume is appropriate.
Right, spirit days and things like that.
Yeah, I think.
Pyjama day.
Oh my gosh, I hate that.
Pyjama day. The kids wear pajamas.
That's not a costume.
Right, we actually, I, there's a thing in here that's keeping kids from wearing pajamas that I see.
So add number four to accessories, if we're just gonna say tails.
No, we're not saying tails. I like his, his comment.
Yeah.
Or just, and, right, 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 right. I don't know if it goes under accessories then, if we're just talking over time.
You'll find a place for it.
We'll find a place, as long as you like.
All right.
I have to say another thing about this.
Furry down. Oh, sorry.
We, we, number one, your favorite word is disingenuous. Do not tell me that my words are disingenuous. You can have a different opinion than mine. Again, we're equally elected officials. You don't have to combat every single thing that I say. You don't have to agree with it. That's fine. You don't get to, to put it down and say it's disingenuous. Are you listening, Mr. Susan?
I, I'm not, I'm not gonna take a berating up here. We're gonna move forward with our policies.
I'm saying the same thing to you. Secondly, there has been this conversation this entire time. Mr. Susan, point of order. There has been this conversation this entire time, that if our children are listening, cause they were very responsive, that I think we need to clarify for a second. It's one thing if we wanna add things in here that we don't allow, but that children see it as a reason kids are getting bullied. We need to actually focus on the other side of that. Sure, we don't want our kids getting bullied, but we can't, we can't justify that by saying what you're wearing is the reason you're getting bullied. That's not a good message. So I just wanna clarify, that is not the intent of this board. Um, and again, whatever we're gonna add in here, we're gonna add in here, but we need to focus on the fact of, if kids are getting bullied, then we need to get to the root cause of that.
Okay.
Okay, can I continue on with the, the, for the very top part, it, student is misspelled on the clean version, just so you know, next to fifty-five, eleven, it's spelled S-T-U-D-E-N-D on mine, so. Just wanna make sure we correct that. Um.
All right.
So, and then upper garments, um, going back to upper garments real fast. The strapless garments are prohibited. Is it possible, or are we okay with adding with the exception of formal wear for school dances?
Or, yeah, or any school function. You could say school function too, cause dances might not be the only time that they do that.
But school function could be, uh, football game, and we maybe don't want that at a football game.
That's true. However.
It's after school, though.
We would have to, um, say formal for, we can come up with the language, because it would be, you know, I'm thinking awards programs. Sometimes the young ladies wear something that's more formal, and also homecoming, and so we can, I'll work with.
With the exception of formal wear. Maybe that's, that covers it.
Formal events or, yeah.
We'll come up with a rule.
I like what you said, Ms. Campbell, about the, the tops meeting the bottoms, and I don't, you know, that's, that kinda covers it, honestly, I think, um, for me.
I had an example from Pinellas, and this is how they worded it, and I don't know if we want, cause actually, Pinellas, like Charlotte actually requires a sleeve, but this is how they worded, this, they're, they're number one. Um, all clothing must be appropriately sized, securely fastened and cover midriff, backsides, and all undergarments at all times. For example, suspenders should be over the shoulders, pants secure at the waist, belts buckled, no underwear, is outerwear, no underwear exposed. But the, that, where was, somewhere it said something about armpit to armpit. Um, oh yeah, clothing must cover the body from one armpit across to the other armpit and down to mid-thigh. We, we're not doing that, cause we're saying it just has to cover the. Right, but all tops must have sleeves. So that idea, you know, cause there was a lot of feedback about, um, boys and tank tops.
Yeah.
You know, which, you know, I hate the term wife beaters, but that's what, how everybody knows it. I mean, but the truth is, you know, so many people wanna say, oh, this is sexist dress code, but the thing is, if we have a guy coming in wearing a shirt that is as tight as what some of our girls wear, they'll say, oh, that's wife beater, it's an undergarment, you can't wear that. So. You know, it's all, I just, we're gonna, we allow the tank tops and whatever, but we need, but I think we need to have something.
But did that armpit to armpit, did that take care of the word modest? Cause doesn't that not cover?
Right. Well, I was gonna, it does, it does address your neck, your neckline thing, because if it goes armpit to armpit, then we're not having to worry about how low it goes, you know?
Explore that. From east to west.
The one-liners up here today, don't you, Mr. Trent?
This is, I know, this is an awkward conversation.
So is that good enough for your, uh, strapless area that you were talking about?
Armpit to armpit, I think that does cover it, doesn't it? I mean, that's, what are you guys?
Literally.
It literally covers it.
You got the ones that go above the armpit and come straight across.
Well, I mean, cause then you don't, whether it's a V-neck or whatever, I mean, if it's going from here to here, it's, you're gonna cover everything that needs to be covered.
That's right, yeah.
You had hats?
Well, hats is actually covered under the first one. And honestly, I think it's fine, cause it's, I, I think, I mean, hats being worn indoors, what, what's the thought? I mean, that, a lot of students commented about hats and hoodies. They wanted hats and hoodies. And, um, what is the board's thought on hats? I.
And beanies, you know, I mean, I, I understand the, the, because I, one of the schools where I did Friday with the school lunch, uh, thing was, was a high school, and I saw so many things. And there's the kids who wear, like, the caps over their hair, like, you know, they have, not necessarily have curlers underneath, but they have, you know, their hair kind of in a, they wouldn't go out in public, but they'd go to school with it. Um, I can't remember what you call this, but, um, caps over their hair, and kids had, um, like a winter cap. I wouldn't necessarily call it a beanie, but you know, it, it's not a hat, like a baseball hat that would cover your face. It's not a hoodie that would, but at the same time, I, at some point, we have this, this, the dress code is about being not professional, cause they're not gonna come wearing suits and ties and, and loafers, but, um, you know, they're here for school. And so, I don't know, I think we need to, it's easier just to say, this is what it is. No hats, rather than men saying, okay, you can have this kinda hat, but you can't have this kinda hat. But if we want to, we can. We can say, oh, you can wear a cap or a hat of some sort, as long as it's not covering your face, which, which would mean hoodies or baseball caps, things that the security cameras are not gonna catch. If you have a tight-fitting beanie on your head, you know, who cares? Um, I, I, I'm not.
It's pretty much covered under, under A1, honestly, with the way that it's on the clean version.
Yeah.
We're good?
Not indoors. Yeah.
Uh, the only problem with that is, is that if they wear a hat, like Mr. Trent was saying, and that security video's trying to get them, they can't pick it, because it might come up. Is that, is that a concern of yours, Mr. Trent?
It, it, not as much. I mean, the hoodies was, there, there's schools that have, um, kind of explored that issue of allowing students to have hats on, but if your teacher, it's, it's almost, goes back to almost the cell phones. If the teacher says at the beginning of the school year, no hats in my room, they, they abided by that. And then, but during the halls and in cafeteria, if they wanted a hat on, but that's.
Is that enough for the direction on the hats? We're good?
All right, and then.
Tank tops?
Um, tank, well, I mean, I think if we say the upper garment covers from armpit to armpit, that tank tops would be allowable at that point, right? I mean.
They already are. They already are. So it just says, the only thing that's not allowed is strapless, but they would change the language to, and I think this was what you talked about the last time, um, that took the inches away.
Right, the one and a half inches, right.
Where it says in B1, the cut-up sleeveless garments must not expose undergarments. Uh, oh, but you wanted to get rid of one.
Yeah, because it says it in five.
Shirts must adequately cover all undergarments and/or the areas that undergarments traditionally cover.
So if you don't wanna expose them, that's the same thing.
Right. And then if you wanna add something about armpit to armpit. And we probably need some visuals of what that means.
Are you saying you'll wear the outfits?
No. I'm saying we have a little stick figure drawing. Well, not stick, you know what I mean?
I, I see a hilarious commercial coming from this.
All right, so.
What to wear, what not to wear. You can demonstrate what not to.
I'm sure Russ can do this, right?
Yeah, we can, Russ, we can have, uh, Russ do the what not to wear and what to wear video.
Yeah.
Mr. Bruce.
They might be some of our most liked and viewed videos.
So were we in agreement then, number three, with rather than necklines being modest, that that's, we replace that with the?
I'm in agreement with that.
Armpit to armpit line?
Sure.
Okay, so.
And then, number five, somebody had said shirts must adequate, are, you're, this is, we're on yours right now, so.
Well, I think Ms. Jenkins had mentioned this one on one and five being the same, so, and they are the same, so.
Um. What happened to four?
Yeah, where is four? What was four?
Baggy clothes.
Is that just a weird formatting thing?
It was excessively large.
Oh, the loose, your baggy clothes.
Hmm.
Okay. But, um, we need to say something in there about it covering your entire, so, because right now, armpit to armpit doesn't cover necessarily your entire.
Right.
I thought we were adding the tops.
No skin exposed between top and bottom.
Tops and bottoms must touch.
Yeah, we had that one. I think we all agreed to that.
Under the lower garments, the, the form-fitting tight spandex leggings, that's still there. Um, I, I think what Ms. Jenkins said, I understand the need to make sure that they're not see-through, and that being the concern on why they're there, so.
Yeah. I, so I think we can make, we can, if there's something we can do, um.
If it just, just take that line out, the form-fitting in there, and then just keep the undergarments shall not be visible, cause that covers it.
So if you just don't have that, so then it would say, what, pants and shorts, I may go to the clean version. Pants and shorts shall conform to the build and stature of the student shall be worn at the waist and shall not extend below the heel of the shoe in length. Rips, holes, or tears in clothing must be below mid-thigh.
Undergarments shall not be visible.
Under, undergarments shall not be visible.
And then the sports bra should be struck from this, cause we're talking about lower garments.
Can you guys explain to me what form-fitting tight spandex leggings types of clothing is not allowed unless proper outer garments cover mid-thigh? So my daughter wears sport, like, she wears leggings, right? And they're colored all the way down. Is that, is that appropriate?
Well, what, what this is saying with this part, we're trying to take out. Right, right. So what, what they wrote in the red line would say that if you're gonna wear leggings, you have to have a shirt that comes down to here.
Down to here?
Yeah, like covering, but that's not, that's not what these kids wear. So I think, I think just strike that line from it.
Now, are we able to allow building principals to not relax these codes, but to be stricter?
Stricter, yeah.
This is the minimum.
Because if it's elementary, I, I've talked to many principals that said, that's, we are going below the butt with a shirt at an elementary level. We're not allowing them to dress like seventeen-year-old juniors. Okay.
Right. I think that needs to be clear with our principals, that if they already have something that, you know.
There's, uh, procedures outlined in the administrative procedure that will need to get outlined, but stricter dress code procedures exist for them to execute.
And there's, and that's always just rule of law, that if we have a policy, they can go deeper, but they can't go past.
I have one of those eleven-year-olds.
And it was interesting, cause some of the comments were from charter school, uh, students who have uniforms and were complaining on our dress code. And I'm like, wait a minute, you have to do what? I'm like, oh, either.
At one of the private schools, just so you know, that there's a private school that charges five dollars to wear jeans on Friday.
Charge me to wear my jeans? That'd be war. Um, so let me just go again. So my daughter will be able to wear and her friend's leggings and not get written up for it. Is that what we're saying here?
It depends on their, what their school chooses.
I'm sorry, I'm using my daughter, she's gonna kill me.
Well, I know.
Same here.
But our, our restrictions will allow it to students to wear leggings, correct?
Right, if we take that line out about the form-fitting tight spandex leggings types of clothing.
So it's, so after tears in clothing must be below mid-thigh, it would just say, undergarments shall not be visible?
Boom, end of it.
That's the next number, yeah.
Okay. All as part of one?
Of one, yeah.
And then pick up, undergarments which shall not be visible, sports bras are considered undergarments, right?
No, it's strike that, cause that does something wrong there.
It doesn't really make sense to have it in the lower garment section.
Okay.
So.
So you guys are okay with that? All right?
All right, dresses and skirts.
Ms. Campbell, when you mentioned that about, um.
Are we gonna add it to the upper garments?
Did, did any of us wanna talk about that again?
What's that?
I mean, that's a security concern.
What is it?
The excessively baggy.
I think we're getting there. I just wanted to get through Ms., Ms. Wright's list.
It's okay.
And then we can go to it.
We're moving down section by section.
Yeah, we kind of are, that's, unless you want to, do you wanna add something to this section?
No, yeah, people are gonna, we're gonna end up going back and forth because of the, I just think it's easier to, if you tackled, like, boxer shorts, we need to make sure that we get a, that we don't agree to that, right?
So, and again, undergarments shall not be visible should cover it, because an undergarment's an undergarment, no matter who wears it, so.
You know, we're in agreeance, so that's good. All right. Cos- costumes, we already did that one?
That's going under accessories, correct?
All right.
Okay.
Crocs?
Somewhere.
Crocs.
Elementary school.
It sounds like there's some divide on that, um.
I'm in favor of allowing students to wear Crocs. There's, it's a fashionable thing. They put those little things inside of them. My son wears them at five, my daughter wears them at four. I don't know if it's a safety precaution. I don't know.
Do you guys wanna speak to that?
You guys care about that?
I'm just, the teacher survey, um, the feedback from the teachers, there were thirty-six instances where Crocs were asked, most of them to not allow them to be worn.
What, can somebody speak to the reason that I'm missing? Like, I don't understand. It's a shoe that's made out of rubber. Are we missing something?
Because it goes back to the safety, because it's not securely, securely wrapped around their feet. So in elementary school, when you're doing fire drills, PE, things of that nature, it's a safety hazard. But I also would bet that if those are elementary teachers, it's also because of the little buttons on them, and they're picking at them, and it's a distraction too. But it was definitely number, it was definitely safety.
So there are Crocs that have a loop around the back of them. They have a, a thing that goes around the back of them.
Sports mode.
Four-wheel drive.
I don't know. Is that the issue?
They call it sports mode in high school. So, you know, it's, it's a safety thing, climbing on the, you know, playground equipment, things like that, but also it's really easy to take them off. Um, and it's a different standard for our secondary students.
Okay, well, that's not, I mean, again, if, if you guys know what the consensus is, leave that to make Crocs allowable. I'm okay with giving that one up, and that's not.
All right.
Yeah.
And then, Ms., you had upper and lower garments, you had that whole section.
Make the top meet the bottom, that's good. Dresses and skirts must reach mid-thigh.
Well, in upper garments was the four that's blank, which was the excessively baggy.
Oh, we didn't, we need to come back around to that conversation.
Yep.
I don't like you bringing that up, but.
Um, you know, it was redlined. Did you guys have, was that based on feedback by any particular group?
I believe it, that, that change came from the secondary setting. I, I could be mishmashing these, but it came out of some collaboration through, you know, the, the meetings or the surveys, but, you know, we, we were referencing something, and I think it was the secondary.
I think excessively baggy is again, subjective, cause what is, what is excessive? I don't know. I, you know, I, it's one of those words that could mean something different from personal person, so.
And clearly it's spoken, our students are reading it as if that means they can't wear baggy clothes, and that's, I don't think that was ever the intent.
If we take a look at C1 real quick, I think that, I mean, we could ask ourselves, does that address that for us?
Yeah, at the waist.
Not extend below the heel of the shoe. And one, I think it does. I think it's fine to just, I don't know.
Where does a very baggy black trench coat fit in this policy?
No, I hear you.
I think, I think you're a hundred percent right, I think that C1 does address it, right? And I think that it gives our principals the right to absolutely enforce that baggy clothes, so I think that's good. Now you said, Mr. Trent, you were on to the trench coat?
Well, I, I think, as I said, where, where does that get addressed here, other than excessively baggy clothing?
Yeah, I don't even know if that would fit necessarily under that.
You could say no trench coats, I mean, is there anything that would stop us from saying no trench coats?
What happens in the cold weather?
We're in Florida.
There's no blizzards.
I think your security on campus would notice something that's an anomaly that a student is wearing, and react appropriately. They've done it in this room as well.
And if we have staff, you know, we're trying to.
I know, well, I mean, let's face it, you're not going to find something that's going to hit every.
Right, 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 right.
Okay.
We can allow the principals to enforce that at a different level, that we can do. Especially in the event that they have a student that may be excessively doing it, it's a concern, so that's good. Okay, Ms. Wright, anything else of your ten thousand things you got on your thing? Very well put together?
No, it's not, it's kind of all over the place, because I just wrote down a few common threads. Number three, shorts must be clearly discernible.
What is it, lower garments, number three?
Yeah, I'm on lower garments still, we haven't moved off of it, I just don't like, I mean.
I like the last part of it, you're saying discernible inseams, that's where you go, like.
I don't, I don't know what that is, again, these are really subjective.
No, I, I think that's, I think that's actually not subjective, because unfortunately, some of them will literally just kind of start out of nowhere, and so it's trying to say that there has to be some kind of an inseam, so. I think that speaks to some of the trends that are happening right now, to avoid that issue in, in the classroom.
So what are we doing here?
Do you have a better?
I don't, I honestly don't, I, I'm just.
Oh, okay, took me a while.
Are you there?
I get number three now.
Okay. Yeah.
You have to be able to tell that there is one.
I, well, ha, I mean.
Without having to investigate.
I'm not touching this right now.
Investigate, you know, like, you don't want to talk about this.
You guys can, you guys can, that's it.
Well, and to be fair, some of them are like, they're not like, shorts are not always straight across anymore, right? And so some will have rips and tears, and they're not really short shorts, but in some parts they are, and so I think that's a really important thing to keep in there.
Okay, so keep it like that, like it is?
Yeah, it needs to be in there.
Okay.
And that's what I said before, it just added, shorts must have clearly discernible inseams of reasonable length, but then again, they kind of have that subjective.
As long as they're covering.
Right.
Okay. Alright, so now we're on to footwear. So crocs, we're going to spell correctly and take the K out. She's, what about, I saw a couple of comments in there about platform shoes, and them being dangerous. I don't know if that's something that we want to put into this.
That was another thing that I thought was interesting, this is to say, let us wear whatever we want, express our style, but don't let our kids wear shoes that are four inches tall, I, I mean, you know.
It's the style, they're, they're moving there. You've seen the platform tennis shoes.
I have, I have, I've seen them, I've seen them in all different kinds.
Are you talking about tennis shoes? I was not.
Like, my daughter's sixth grade thing, they were wearing those tennis shoes that had at least two inches on them. I know, I agree.
Yeah, but I mean, at that, at that point, I mean, we, it's, safety is an issue, if, if a student, I think we could have enough flexibility. I, I don't necessarily, like you said a little bit ago, Ms. Wright, we're not going to, we can pick apart and put every single thing in here that we might, and we're still, and then tomorrow, the styles will change, and there'll be something in there that, that we won't have covered.
Something we didn't think about.
You know, I, if it's, I think our principals have the flexibility, because we have in here, down at the bottom, that the principal is the one who's going to enforce it. If we have a principal who, there's a student who is, there's a safety issue that they're causing, because of they're, they're the only one who's wearing a certain issues, and it's causing a problem, I think that they should have the flexibility to address it without us having to handle, put every little single thing in the policy.
Administration can put that in there if they need to, correct?
Yeah, it says in here that the principal.
Okay.
But if we start telling girls, you can't wear a two-inch heel, or a three-inch heel, or, or boys.
Whatever.
Should have it, they have to run down the hallway or something. Alright, um, do you, is it okay if I go to Ms. Jenkins about this stuff and come back?
Yeah, I'm done, I think.
Ms. Jenkins, you had a couple on upper and lower garments, I was going to give you the opportunity that if we haven't already addressed that.
I feel like we already did that, we were going, we were going order by order.
Ms. Jenkins, I just wanted to make sure.
We diverted, I understand, I'm still talking. I think we, I think we went through it, I think everybody's concerns and issues have been addressed at this point.
Okay, well then we'll just run through the check, thank you. Mr. Jean, do you have anything, I had necklines, modest difference, hoodies, tank tops, underwear, we got all that, right? Alright.
I think we have it all covered.
Ms. Campbell, headbands, excessively large, bendy clothes.
Yeah, did we address the sweatband thing, was that a, like, I, I don't know, what I'm picturing is, you know, what my son needs to wear, because his hair is really long when he plays basketball, I mean, but I don't have a problem with the kids wearing a sweatband in a class, because it's not covering.
I know why, I suspect why middle school and elementary school teachers would have an issue with that, because they become.
Projectiles?
Projectiles from across the room, you know. So, again, if, if the building principal says no to that for seventh and eighth grade middle schools, then that's their prerogative.
So my question is, does it, does it need to be in here for everybody, because this is a bare minimum?
Yeah.
My daughter wears soccer, and I'm sorry, I keep, I gotta say, I've seen people wear soccer headbands and stuff like that, that are like, and I've seen that as part of a female undergarment, or dress, I'm all screwing this thing up.
Yeah, you are.
Yeah.
You know what I'm talking about here, right? So I, I'm okay with pulling it out of there if you guys wanted to.
I'm okay with it, and the principal has the option to enforce it if it becomes a problem in their school.
We're good.
Yep, to remove sweatbands.
Remove sweatbands on number one.
Alright, we had the baggy clothes under you, Ms. Campbell, we're good there. You got tops to bottoms, that thing you were talking about, gangs move to another area, did you want to address that?
Yeah, I just, I don't know, it just, like, it's just kind of going along, and we're talking about, and then all of a sudden, we have this gang paragraph, just maybe it goes.
Is that one of their?
Down at the bottom, or, I, I don't know. Maybe it's fine, that's probably Neola, so I just leave it, it's not worth fighting over. I don't think we're fighting, but. Yeah.
No, we're not fighting at all, okay. Perfect.
Alright, I think we're good.
We're good, I'm good with all of what you guys have.
They have.
Yeah, well, that will go to them, and then we ask, Ms. Ms. Hand may want to make some adjustments to the dress policy.
Just a little concerned about my Grinch suit for this coming holiday season.
Your Grinch suit?
Otherwise, I'm good, thank you.
That counts as a spirit day.
Yeah.
That counts as a spirit day. And do we, we don't, because we do have the spirit days where some of these rules, like hats, are allowed. Do we have somewhere in here that addresses spirit days?
I think we can address that under the principal's discretion. And we can add a little asterisk about spirit days.
Right, because on those days, we can have different kinds of hats, or costumes, or whatever, you know, and don't want it to be limiting that.
So, Mr. Reed, do you feel comfortable with the things that we have? Okay, I wanted to say thank you for being so, like, attentive through this process. You, you did a great job, and had some great input. Ms. Campbell with her stuff, Ms. Megan Wright, everybody else, Ms. Klein, we all feel pretty good about this?
Yes.
We're good? Alright. Alright, you guys, is it okay if we take a five-minute break and come back for a second? There we go.
Next is to review the remaining 2,000 policies. We reviewed through 2412 at the April 25th Board Work Session. Next policy is the Neola template 2414. We don't have this one. This one deals, I don't know if you guys had a second to look at the Neola policy, but it's It's 2415. I'm so sorry.
Hang on, I gotta get that.
The issue is, is that it, yeah, no, you guys have plenty of time. I'm not gonna run. So what it is, is that 2415 deals with, and I can set up my computer too, it deals with tutoring. And I don't know if, it just was one of those weird looking things that I don't think that I cared to add, but I was gonna give you guys the opportunity.
What number did we get there?
2415 is the one we're on. We got through 2412.
It's a, it's a Neola template, so
Oh, we didn't have it.
Yeah, it's tutoring for credit, and I don't know if we really need it. I didn't see it, you know. So I didn't know what your thoughts were on it. When you get set, just give me the thumbs up.
Open up all kinds of things.
Looks like Ms. Jenkins is ready.
Yeah, I mean, I think we need staff to tell us whether or not we even do this, or how we implement this.
They had not given me any indication they wanted it, so I just didn't know. Are we okay with, you're waiting. I'll wait for you. Just let me know.
I'm trying to move on, that's not one that we
Yeah, this one, we didn't, we haven't had, there hasn't been a situation where we need it, and then quite frankly, if staff really wanted it, then they could bring it up to us. I think we're good to go.
What was the date of the, because I have to reopen it, of the, when Paul sent the email?
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
Yeah, 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 I got it right here. So February 28th at 10:21.
Because I had to open it.
I mean, Gibbs sent it. Okay. Now we're gonna play the game. I'm gonna look back at that policy discussion when I'm retired and laugh at that one. All right. 2415.
I mean, these are both optional.
Right, so we not implement?
Yep, yep, so we're on to 2416.
Which we just did in December, so that one's okay. This one's
Yep, yep. You guys good? Anybody wanna change it? No? I'm just gonna kinda run through it, and if I hear somebody yell, then I'll stop. If not, I'm just gonna keep moving. All right, move on. 2417.
I read that this one needs to be updated to match Neola, so there's quite a bit more in here.
Mm-hmm, dealing with life skills that build confidence, all of that stuff. I think we have a couple of things here where it says Instruction for Acquired Immune Deficiency Syndrome. You have a parent opt-out. Some of those things. Not sure what direction you guys wanna go with this. So if you guys look at 2417, and you look at the Neola, there's a bunch of additions that I think we should adopt, but then it gives us the opportunity to talk about Acquired Immune Deficiency Syndrome. It's a whole section on, I think that there's, you know, teaching abstinence from sexual activity. I don't know if this is something that we wanted to bring on.
I think that's what we actually have in our policy right now.
Yeah, our standard is abstinence.
Abstinence, yeah.
It is, but this is a whole, like
Mr. Susan, just
Yes.
I was about to ask if you, you all could speak into your mics, because we can't hear now.
Yeah, okay. It's done on purpose. It caught me. Anyways, yeah, if you look at the teaching abstinent, it's just worded differently. You know what I mean? And it's
Yeah, it just elaborates on it. I don't think it's bad. There's nothing in it that
Okay. Is anybody against adding the Instruction for Acquired Immune Deficiency Syndrome?
Oh, and then you know what? Look down at the bottom. The, we may have this, this is pretty new, so I don't think we've added it anywhere, but there's this section about Instruction CPR, which is new. I think that just passed last legislative, legis-
We actually were
Legislative session, but that includes that additional piece.
Which I think we absolutely should do.
No doubt. Love it. Was waiting to talk about it, but
So this is one we need to put in the hopper.
And then we should have called Sean Seaman, so he could come up here and give a speech about it, because he does such a good job. Yep, I'm okay with that. So I think we are adding the Neola template with the
Instruction on Acquired Immune Deficiency Syndrome.
Syndrome and the Instruction on CPR AED.
Yeah, I mean, I can't see it. I like both of them.
There's one thing that we need to add to this. When I was talking to Sean, he wanted to put together a thing where all of our staff knew where they were. So many people in here don't, may not remember, but we had a student that went down at Vieira High School, and they were screaming for the AED out at the field, and they thought they were seeing the athletic director, because nobody knew where it was. And the student died a couple times. We actually were over at the hospital over there in Orlando doing prayer circles all night. He died like three times over there, and the kid left.
Wow.
So I think
We have an AED policy.
She's raising her hand. Dr. Sullivan's raising her hand.
Dr. Sullivan, you wanna come up to the mic?
I think there's some changes in this policy that was kind of right.
Okay.
Any legislation is impacted by this, as in, both the RNs and the
So do you want us to hold on this, and have you, you kinda heard where we were gonna go with those checks, but anything else you guys wanna take and bring back to us?
I can't get it.
Right. No, I'm saying that once you get it, you can bring it back. Okay, that makes sense, but there's direction to go add those other two sections.
But just to your point earlier, we do have, because we did this last year.
Yeah.
We have a new, or a revised AED policy, 8452.
Does it speak to, does it speak to educating all the staff on where they are and the usage of it?
Yeah, it talks about training, and should be notified at the location, and all of that.
The other thing that we have is, is our emergency response teams sometimes come in, and they don't know which entrance to come back to. There's just a coordinating piece, so we'll wait for it to come back, and we'll do it. All right, 2421. Career and Technical Education Program. This is very in-depth, and I think
All the Florida statutes that were cited are
That's a Dr. Sullivan as well.
What's that?
She's gonna be bringing that one back.
Yep, so we're good on that one?
So hold off until
There's enough statutes that I know something's gonna change in there.
And I believe the sponsored activities as well, right, Dr. Sullivan? No, all right. Was it 2420, or 30, or 31, interscholastic activities?
No, that one I'm working on, so
We have two Neola policies before we get to that.
Right, that aren't in ours.
Students as trainees.
We might
I like it.
I wonder if we have that in something else.
Seems like that would be under CTE, Career and Professional Academies, just
He's just reinforcing it.
Okay, I don't know if we have that in there or not.
Yep, but it's not gonna hurt to add it. It just says basically, we're gonna do it. So I think we're good.
Yeah, I think we should add it. I don't see why we wouldn't add it. I mean
Good to add 2421.01. All right, move on to the next one, which is 2423, School to Work Program.
You're flying through, opening these things up faster than I am, so
My computer's quick. Yep.
All right. We do that, right?
Yep, we do, but
If we don't call it work release, that's prisons. What do we call it? Work-based learning, correct?
OJT.
OJT is what I put it.
Sorry, the Neola policy, they have a template for 2423, School to Work Program. We have that, where it's, you know, the work-based learning, right, where students can leave.
We do.
Okay. So we have it, we just don't have a policy for it.
Yep. Fair enough. So I'm okay with adding it. There's a series of sections A through G. I think that
When they bring it to us, maybe they can make some suggestions as to which of those we need to add.
So what you're saying is, is we wanna add it, send it to staff, and have staff choose which ones of A through G that they think is appropriate for our system, and then bring it back to us at the time? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Are you guys okay with that?
Yeah.
I think we wanna add it. We just don't wanna do it wrong and tweak something, right?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
All right, moving on. Here we go. 2430, which is not in, yeah, okay. So 2430. District-sponsored clubs and activities. It's pretty much, we have
Is this the one, Mr. Gibbs, you were saying?
There, I thought there was something going on with this one, but you guys can go ahead and proceed with this.
It would fall under Student Services, usually.
I think that when you We have This one's a little bit different than what we have. There's a bunch of sections inside of here that, or there's some that we can add. Some of them I don't like. I think this is one that, that we should ask staff to review and bring back recommendations for, because I think that there's some additions to Neola that are in here that I, I think it, we've got two extra statutes that are referenced. And I think that there's a lot of cross-references here to things that are inside of our policies, both with security and other things that we may have to take a look at.
It's interesting, because I don't think we have, there's, there, and I, these aren't requirements. I think they're just suggestions. There's, one of the suggestions is, in order to be eligible for one of these activities at clubs, including non-interscholastic clubs, there's some options where they have to have maintain a grade, certain grade point average, or not have a failing grade. I think that would be tough and demotivating for our students. Gosh, there are bugs flying around.
I know.
It's probably that Chinese stuff. Is that Chinese stuff?
Yeah, it's all your Chinese candy.
It is.
Yeah, so there's, but there's some options in there.
So are we okay with giving it back to staff and asking them to bring it back for recommendations? It just seems that there's enough there that we, we may not
Yeah, we've got, the last time Neola updated was 16 years after our last update, so
Yep. So I think we're good there. Paul, you got that direction? Good. Next up, 2430.01 in our book, and then
Special programs by community volunteers.
It just basically gives, let me see what the Neola piece is. Is it identical?
Yeah, it's the same.
Okay, so we'll just update that one since it's exactly the same?
Yeah, they're just, the name of the security office is the only thing different, because they call theirs
I don't think this is the same.
Office of District and Social Security.
Board believes opportunities in hands appropriate.
Yeah, it is.
Curricular activities, the board response. Oh, that's what it is for a board recognition. Okay, all right, we're good there. Moving on. Gosh, we might get through the 2000s still?
Neola doesn't have any updates on this one, I don't believe, because there's this 2002.
Ms. Sullivan, Dr. Sullivan and crew in the back, do we have a, because this is, it goes along with the volunteers. I was wondering, is there a coordinator at the district for mentors, since we found out there wasn't one for volunteers?
Yes.
Okay.
She, it's Chanis Spear, works out of Student Services. She's done a numer, a number of community presentations on it. There's a district-wide process. It was a big rollout in the fall.
Okay, good. All right. So I think this one we're good on, right? Okay, next up. 2431. Interscholastic athletics. If this one's okay, if you guys would, we're in the middle of updating the, just so everybody knows, there's a lot of stuff in here, and we're in the process of updating the athletics, both interscholastically and intermurally and all that. If we can pass on this one, and we can work on it separately, because it's a, we have some recommendations that'll probably be coming before us. Does that make sense to you guys?
And it's been updated within
Yeah, well, there's, yeah.
We're not out of the five-year mark.
No, but the, the issue, yeah, the issue is, is there's a lot of competition, holding things back, and those are all gonna change, so. All right.
We don't have this.
Three. 01, participation by transfer students, yes. Get in there. I like this. This we should have, because it references FHSAA law. It goes through
But I wanna say, I thought we had something in our previous policy about transfer students.
We do. There is a process inside there, but this one's more robust, and it has a bunch of statutory recommendations, and it has, this is always a office, this is always up for contention with transfers. I think I'd like this policy.
Yeah, I can't see why we wouldn't have this policy. I mean
It's just literally laws and statutes from Florida FHSAA and the statutes, which brings it kind of up to speed.
We have I knew we had done it not very long ago. In 5610.05, which is under the Student Section, we have participation in extracurricular activities, and it addresses some of those things.
Which one is it, 5610?
It's not really long, so it doesn't mean we can't have this one, but 5610.05.
So we're okay with adding this one?
Yeah, if we have it somewhere else, though, should we
It's not robust.
Transfer students, yeah. Okay, yeah, now we
Okay. Good, good for that one. Mr. Gibbs?
Yep.
All right, 2431.03, concussion and head injuries. This is pre-standard, straightforward. There's, it's got an update as of 2023, I think, if you guys would like.
I think it's just a formatting update.
Yeah, looks like it's So
Yeah, we just did this one in 2022.
I just, we have minutes for purposes. Student Okay. Okay. All right, we're good with it? We already have it in there. It's already up to par. No need to change. Good point. Ms. Jenkins, thank you.
This next one's the same, too.
Oh, wait.
Which one we don't have in athletic injuries?
There's athletic injuries when
Prevention and treatment program.
2430.5. Oh. This one gets kinda
Well, I think it's important, though, when we're talking about our student athletes, if they get injured, what are we doing to help them?
Well, I think, to be honest with you, there's some other stuff, like we're talking about community-based athletic trainers coming in. There's a bunch of those kind of components here, and this qualifies it. If we can hold on this one and bring it back as part of like an athletic package, or if you guys wanna move forward with this one, and then we can come back later on, I would just, I'm kinda hesitant, because I'm not sure
Make a note that if we need to put it in there, we don't have it somewhere, you know, to get it covered.
We don't have this, this type of depth on anything, like, I just don't know, I don't wanna say, let's do this, and then restrict athletic trainers that are currently out there, and I don't know if it's per statute that some of these restrictions have to be in. It'd be easy for us to have a, if we had an athletics guy. So I would make the recommendation to, to hold on it, but if you guys feel like we should move forward with it.
Well, we're not hurrying on any of these, you know, they're just, as they can get them to us, so I think it
So you guys okay with putting this, with part of that athletics package?
Yeah, we're gonna be looking at
Yep. Makes sense. Okay, driver's education.
It's the same.
Something my 22-year-old could have used.
Yeah, this is the same.
It is. Yep.
Yeah, very short.
We're good? That one checks out. Mr. Gibbs, summer programs.
We should just adopt Neolas. It says basically the same thing, but way more explicitly about laws about USC students.
Good with that. You guys good?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Adopt the Neola template. Moving on. 2540. 2450, sorry. What's that? Uh-oh. What do we do?
What are we doing? Due to state law changes.
Adulting community education?
Yep.
All right.
Yeah, it's coming out already.
Sullivan's gonna bring that one's quick. Good job. All right, 2451, alternative education plans and programs. Oh, here we go.
So we did options with this one, but
This one we should probably ask staff to look over.
Yeah, I think this is one that is important to look at, because
Because they have already selected one of them.
We picked, it looks like
Dr. Sullivan, could we send this to you guys, and you guys take a look at it and make a recommendation back to us?
I will absolutely share it with the appropriate personnel in Student Services.
There's no, there's no Neola updates, because it, the copyright's 2002, so it just pick one or the other. It's pretty generic, you know, it's, the implementing is, the procedures is gonna be what Unless the board has a real desire to switch to option one.
Or have staff look it over?
Yeah, we can, see if it needs to be updated.
Yep, all right. 2460. Seems pretty close to what we had. Testing programs.
I'm gonna say, because those laws change quite frequently, that this one probably needs to come back.
All right.
In the future.
Let's have staff take a look at it, see if there's any law changes, and bring it back. You're right. I think anything that has over 10 statutes will probably change somehow.
It's good to keep a close pulse on that one.
All right. Mr. Gibbs, did you get that one?
Yep.
There's a whole page of
We actually have a policy that Neola doesn't have, or no, wait, or no, we don't have a 20
461, recording of IEP team meetings. We already do this.
Right, so we
We have a 2460.01.
Right, .01.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I kinda did backwards.
Yeah, this is, this is straightforward. This is just defining what that is.
Okay.
It's law.
Yeah, so this is good. We can mark, just reviewed.
Yep. And then we have 2461, recording of IEP meetings.
Yeah, and we updated this my first year on the board with the options of you know, no video recording, but I think we we laid out, like, you could request ahead of time for, for audio recording.
It doesn't say, it doesn't
It doesn't say
It doesn't say, it just says, well, it says capture voices.
Our policy's in line with option two from Neola.
For purposes of policy, a recording is defined as the capture of voices. Are there any, it's electronically, digitally, or? So it does sound like it's video recording of the IEP is strictly prohibited, so it is just recording of voices, not
An audio recording, right?
Um, is there any particular reason, I guess, that we would be opposed to one versus the other?
You mean as far as only doing audio as opposed to video?
Only doing audio versus doing video.
There's, it's part of your teacher contract as well. That's definitely part of the conflict.
We, it was a long conversation we had when we went through this, as far as what, you know, all the different situations that can come up during IEP meetings, so I would actually encourage you to go back, because I don't remember, because I've slept a lot since April of 2019, but we did have some really good conversations, and those would be in the workshops leading up to that vote.
In 2019?
Yeah, so I would say probably the workshop, one of, probably the first workshop, I'm gonna guess, from our normal calendar, the first workshop in March is probably where we had that longer conversation.
Okay.
Tammy can probably find that, do some research and find it, and then you could go back and watch the
I would be curious to see it.
Yeah, because I can't remember all the reasons behind it, that Chris Moore shared with us when they walked through, why they recommended that other option.
Okay.
All right. Moving on to 2520. Selection and adoption.
Yes, it's true. We have to redo all of them again.
Okay, so you want us to wait on this one? You can move it.
Yeah, there's three in a row that are gonna need to be changed based on currently newly adopted in the Q State statutes.
Three in a row being
Sounds like you're really ecstatic about that opportunity.
Well, as you recall, it's only been active for about two board meetings now.
Yeah.
So, 2520, 2521, 2522.
Oh, they have a 2522, which we don't have, so you're saying
Which we will need.
Okay, okay.
So you're saying, wait until the legislation passes, and then just come back to those. Okay?
Yes, sir.
But it, but it, she does But it, but it does seem like our process actually will align with what I've heard so far of the new bill.
Yeah, there, there are some changes in timeline.
Okay.
So there's some language on certain types of challenges have to be pulled within five days.
Oh, wow.
There's some language on your committee members must have parents. So there's, there's, there's a little bit of tweaking. I don't think. I don't think it conflicts with the intent of the board. It just has some tweaking of language. In my opinion, they're actually mirroring some of the things you guys have already done. And so the intent will be super similar, but some different specifics that we have to change in the policy because ours conflicts.
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Sounds good. Twenty-five, thirty-one is exactly the same. We can stamp that as updated.
Yeah.
We're good with that? Okay, then. Twenty-five, forty, audio visual use.
Um, Neola hasn't updated there since two thousand two, but it looks like we did in twenty eighteen.
Looks pretty close.
Yeah, it looks, this is the same as. Here's from.
Okay. Right? Okay, we're good. Updates it? Update it there, Mr. Paul. Move on to twenty-five, forty.
Uh, we don't have it.
We don't have a service learning.
Oh, no, we have, we just did twenty-five, forty, right?
Twenty-five, seventy-five.
Twenty-five, seventy-five, service learning? Oh, I taught that class.
I like it. I don't.
I already, I would say that this, I, I, I do like this. I taught this class, so like. If you guys are okay sending it to staff and asking them to come back because there are some things inside of here, but I taught a service learning class. It was, it was used as Space Coast's dump class for all the kids that just needed an extra elective that were just really bad behaviors. And I had a blast with it.
Yeah.
We did a lot of good stuff in there.
I think a lot of our kids learn really well through service learning.
Yep. We good with that? Sending it to staff, Ms. Campbell?
Mm-hmm.
Ms. Jenkins, you good with that? Okay.
And we just updated the next one to mass.
Talking about twenty-five.
Last year. Yeah, twenty-six oh five.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six oh five. Yep, yep, it's pretty there. Feel good about it, you guys?
Yeah.
Approving it and moving on. Okay, so twenty-six zero five is approved. Mr. Gibbs?
Yep.
Student assessment, but we, we have twenty-six, twenty-three. Student assessment. I'm waiting for her to come on and say there's been a change. It looks really big.
Yeah.
But it doesn't have any statutory laws in it.
Well, Neola updated in twenty-twenty-two, so I don't know what the.
Oh, look at all those, look at all those that aren't referenced in our, oh boy.
Yeah, so this one needs some updating.
I think that this one needs to go back to staff, Paul.
Okay.
And have them look it over because it's got.
Well, they're pages, six pages long and there's a ton of Florida statutes cited in here on it.
Tammy does a good job of reducing everything, but I think that there's.
It's the small font, wait a minute.
There's definitely some statutorys.
Oh, okay, I see. That one's.
There also may be some changes from this one to.
Yep.
From current, um, from this session because there's a section in there about the Florida, I just lost it, tax credit scholarship.
Legislation.
And I think that was one of the scholarships that got absorbed into the FES. Maybe, so.
So we just send it back to them and they can bring it back after the.
Yeah, after the session, after Neola releases their updates.
Good, okay. Next up is twenty-seven hundred academically high-performing school districts.
Oh, we don't have one of them.
We do not have that.
We don't have that.
Okay, it's got three statutory requirements on it.
Um, I, it's funny, I'm just. Don't know why we would need to have this.
I don't either.
As a policy, because it sounds more like a state.
It's like a report card.
Sounds like a state rule.
Yeah, I mean, it talks about districts and.
Mm-hmm.
Let me, let me read there. Hang on one second.
This is like a DOE thing.
What's got?
Yeah, I don't need, I don't think we need this one.
You see what they're saying? We can add it because it's part of Neola's templates, but it's a DOE.
Yeah, it just basically says, here's, here's how you get to be a higher rated district. Here's what happens if you don't.
Yep.
But it's not necessarily a, to me.
Something that needs to be written into policy?
Right, a policy, right, it's.
Is it, there's nothing in the statutes that say we need to have a policy on this, is there?
No.
Okay. I haven't looked up the Florida statutes that it cites.
The next one's identical as well.
Yeah, I had a, a lot of notes on the next one I wanted to talk about, but I was going to wait. Are you guys okay with sending that to?
With not having twenty-seven? I just don't think we need twenty-seven hundred.
Okay. Are you guys, would you guys agree with that?
I, if it's a state standard with the OE, I don't know why we would write it into policy if it's, I mean.
Yeah.
We just have to change it anytime that they change their standard, so.
Yeah.
It's not anything for us to do.
We still have to adhere to it.
Right, either, right, we either earn it or we don't earn it, you know?
So I have, this next one that we have, I have quite extensive notes on.
Okay.
I've been, took some liberty to.
Okay.
No, I'm just kidding. It's exactly the same and it's the last one. So Paul, can we just add, I had you, didn't you? Did you get nervous?
Seriously?
I was like, oh my gosh.
Exactly. Paul, it's exactly the same except it doesn't have the letters. Can we just add the letters just because it follows the template more?
What letters?
We have letters.
The letters are in ours. They're not in Neola's.
They're not in Neola's.
Yeah, we have letters.
All right, so we'll leave the letters in ours.
And actually, we may have the letters because a couple of years ago, I asked us to.
I knew what that was.
Format our policies consistently, so that may be why we put the letters in there. I like letters.
We good? Yes, we're good. I like them too. We're good. We got through the two thousands. You guys ready to go to three thousands or do you want to break? I think we break. You guys good?
And continue on Tuesday. I haven't looked.
Because I, I have a feeling, like I have to refresh on the three thousands. I haven't had a chance to. I know that.
Okay. I have what's left for breaking and coming back up.
So. So then, so that we're prepared.
Mr. Trent, did you have, I'm so sorry, I cut you off. Did you want to go into the three thousands?
So then, so that we're, we're prepared. Right now, we have a work session next Tuesday. So right now, the only thing on the agenda is the facility service budget presentation that Sue talked about earlier.
Yep.
And then, and let staff may have some other things to come up. They're going to have other things and then we're going to, with, with the time that's left at the end, we'll start on the three thousands.
Big party.
Okay, so we need to be ready for the three thousands on Tuesday.
Maybe we'll wear our uniforms.
But not four. We don't have four thousands, right?
We have.
We don't have them, but Neola has templates that have been provided to you, so.
So we can look. Okay.
Yep.
But we're just going to plan on getting through the three thousands for Tuesday. Or starting them.
Starting them.
Starting them, okay.
I don't want to go too fast.
Thank you, Mr. Susan. I very much appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, everybody good?
Yeah.
All right.